Qualicum Beach? Does it not work? I'll start over. Welcome to the Committee of Hope Meeting in the town of Qualicum Beach. I want to acknowledge that we are meeting on the traditional territories of the Koo-sailis people, in particular, the Qualicum First Nation. The agenda is before you, council. Is any changes to the agenda required? Then the agenda is adopted by consent. I just said that the agenda is adopted by consent. All right. And so we can start off with the quarterly report. There's a recommendation, but I suggest that we can move the recommendation, move and second it, but not vote on it until after we've completed to hear from everyone else. So if I can have a mover and a second for receiving the report. Councillor Skipsey, Councillor Van de Wijk. Presentations. The first presentation. And before we do that, I would like to read a statement that council has agreed that I should read, and it goes like this. We'd like to take the opportunity to hear from the public. And I'd like to remind everyone that the town of Qualicum Beach fosters a respectful and inclusive workplace. As the meeting chair, I have the duty to take all measures necessary to ensure that meetings comply with the community charter, council procedure by law, and workplace laws. Only one speaker at a time will have the floor and may only speak after being acknowledged by the chair. Your comments need to be about an issue, not a person, and must be respectful and constructive. We have a duty to ensure that members of the public have a respectful opportunity to express their views and concerns. Please refrain from booing, clapping, cheering, interrupting, or any other action that may discourage somebody else from speaking with a different point of view. Discriminatory or defamatory comments or comments are not of harassing nature will not be tolerated. Please remember that this is a safe place for everyone. And if the chair, a member of council, or the CAO sends this guideline as not being respected, I will politely interrupt and remind everyone of the rules of participation. A recess may be called, and if appropriate, behavior continues, then that person may be required to leave or the meeting adjourned. Thank you for doing your part in supporting safe and respectful civic engagement. Our first presenter will be Mithany Lemke, Vice President of Serra and Sandrus, General Manager of Operations, Ascent Helicopters. Go ahead. Just introduce yourself and place of residence. You don't need your address, just where you live. I need to turn the microphone on by turning the button to the green? Yep?
Okay. There we go. Thank you. My name is Mithany Lemke. I am a resident of Nanus Bay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. As you have heard time and time again, and we have heard time and time again, no one likes helicopter noise until they need it. Please take a moment and think back to June of 2023, when the Cameron Bluffs wildfire began and the smoke was visible to almost everyone in Qualicum. That fire was too close to home. My name is Mithany Lemke, and I'm the Vice President and Co-Owner of Ascent Helicopters Limited. Next year, Ascent will celebrate its 20th anniversary of operations, accident-free. Today, I thank you for your time and attention. I would like to tell you a little bit about our history, our services, our impact on the community, and then I will speak about the Qualicum Beach Airport and ask for your help. Ascent is a family-owned company that was established in 2005. We began Ascent with only one helicopter, a Bell 212, that was acquired to fulfill a 10-year contract with the Ministry of Forests Rapid Attack Program for wildfire suppression out of Salmon Arm, B.C. Our second helicopter was a Bell 205 that was used for wildfire fighting in the summer and heli-skiing in the winter. At the same time that we were building a company, we were also building a family here in Qualicum. I told my husband that for every helicopter he bought, I wanted a child. We had two daughters, and I lost. Our first base of operations was right here at the Qualicum Beach Airport. My late grandfather, Bill Brown, was very happy and proud that we had established here in his town. We worked out of the Qualicum Beach Airport for eight years. Over the next few years, the company expanded to include work in the following industries: power line, resource and wildlife management, tourism, film and television, search and rescue, emergency response, and air ambulance. Now, with two daughters and a fleet of 16 helicopters, our headquarters is located in Parksville, and we have bases in Langley, Fernie, Quebec, North Carolina, and Istanbul, Turkey. From our headquarters in Parksville, the services that we offer are all centered around disaster prevention and emergency response. Here is what we do locally. We keep your lights on. As a service provider for B.C. Hydro, we conduct biannual power line inspections, where we fly B.C. Hydro linemen to look for fallen trees or potential line repairs. We assist with building, maintaining, and repairing power lines and the towers that hold them up. We work with B.C. Hydro on emergency power outages to deliver crews, move supplies, and conduct repairs. We look for you. We work with several Mid-Island search and rescue organizations: Aerosmith, Nanaimo, Campbell River, and Port Alberni to conduct aerial searches and rescues, including hoist rescues. And we can help to save you. Ascent is registered on the emergency response plans of many local forest companies. And since 2013, we have been working with BCEHS, which is the B.C. Emergency Health Services, as a provider of air ambulance services. We were initially based out of the Lower Mainland and are now operating from our Parksville base. The air ambulance program is staffed with critical care paramedics and provides both patient transport and scene response. Recently, Ascent was awarded a 10-year, $544 million contract with the province of B.C. to provide air ambulance services across the province from five bases of operations beginning in 2025. The air ambulance portion of our business is one of the most rewarding jobs we do. From our Parksville base, we can quickly access the island and its surrounding communities. For the first time, Mid-Islanders can access the critical health care that they need in under an hour. In the last two years, our response and transfer time has saved local lives of both adults and children. Ascent does not offer tourism, photography, wedding, or scenic flights from its Parksville base. When we are in these skies, we are serving you. We also offer specialty services. We are at the forefront of innovation in the helicopter industry. We design and manufacture tools that will help us to do our job more efficiently and more safely. Our research and development team work full-time to bring new products to market and enhance the services that we offer. Ascent offers night vision operations, which allows us to use specially modified aircraft and night vision goggles to assist with emergency services at night. Ascent has a dedicated hoist department consisting of hoist technicians who are trained in hoist operations, Class D fixed line, and who are rescue technicians and trainers. Ascent was founded here in this community to serve this community. Next year, we will move into a new 25,000-square-foot facility in Parksville. Half of this facility is being specialty-built to house BCEHS's critical care team, who will be providing the highest level of paramedic care by both ground and air ambulance on an expanded schedule, 24 hours a day. Our impact goes beyond the services that we offer. Ascent currently employs 78 people. That is 78 local families that can buy homes, goods and services, fill schools, attend activities, and pay taxes. 78 households that contribute directly to our economy. As we expand our services to meet BCEHS contract obligations, our staff will double. We are attracting pilots, engineers, administrators, and support staff. Their partners and spouses will also bring their own skills and services to enrich our communities. Their children will grow up here, just as ours have. Over the years, Ascent has supported the community through the support of sport for youth, including soccer, hockey, volleyball, equestrian, and the Raven Song Breaker Swim Club. We contribute to the Coldest Night of the Year in support of some of our most vulnerable people. We contribute to the Grand Parade, which celebrates and supports local seniors and their families. And we are committed supporters of the Oceanside Special Olympics. Here's where I need your help. Qualicum Beach is fortunate to have an airport, which is also an important business. As an integral part of our local aviation industry, we feel that this airport could play an even greater role in our community and our economy. Airport improvements mean better services, increased income, and increased commercial land value. We feel fortunate to work closely with members of the airport administration team, and we have developed excellent working relationships. Currently, Ascent uses the Qualicum Beach Airport for training. Mandated by Transport Canada, annual training happens for each pilot in every helicopter company. Locally, training happens for six different companies in the Oceanside area. Ascent's pilots participate in this annual recurrence training. This ensures that their skills stay sharp and provides Ascent with the confidence that important missions are carried out safely. We currently provide 95 hours of training annually, and about 30% of that training happens at this airport. We take noise abatement seriously, and we spend a lot of money to do as much as we can. I do understand that Qualicum Beach has a long history of dealing with noise complaints around aviation and aviation-related activities at the airport. Our business had hoped to remain and grow at the Qualicum Beach Airport, but we left in 2013 because the town just wasn't supportive of our operation. In 2023, we spent over $1.4 million locally in jet fuel, which could have been purchased at the airport. Many people in Oceanside are excited about Ascent and take pride in what we are doing. Today, I hope that you have learned something about our business and that you leave with a sense of pride in what we are doing. Please get excited, and let that excitement be what is talked about. I truly believe that positive energy can outweigh the loud, very loud, complaining voices of a minority. Let's support the future of aviation and our airport. If you have any questions, please reach out by email to info@ascentheli.ca. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lemke. Next is Stephanie Aldridge, speaking for Hope Air. Is Stephanie here?
Good afternoon.
One line.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay. I'm just going to bring up a presentation that I think was circulated. Thank you for allowing me to present today, Mayor and Council. My name is Stephanie Aldridge, and I am with Hope Air. Hope Air, actually, I'm joining you from North Vancouver and the traditional and unceded territories of the Squamish, Salawitutu, and Musqueam Nations. Hope Air is a national charity. We are Canada's only national charity that provides travel and accommodations for Canadians in financial need who have to access medical care far from home. We are working to provide better health by providing more timely access to appointments, by eliminating some of the barriers to access medical care. Costs associated with travel for medical care are quite substantial. In 2021, Jude Cornellson did a study, she's a researcher at UBC, and estimated those costs to be about $2,000 per condition and per episode of travel. We also surveyed our Hope Air clients this year, and in this year's survey, we had 1,150 respondents, and 87% of those respondents felt that they had no other options without Hope Air. Almost two-thirds reported that they would go into debt to manage travel costs associated with the travel for medical care. And another 18% had said they would cancel or postpone their appointments. So Hope Air is really about reducing the barriers, the financial barriers, and the burden and the stress burden of travel to help people access the care they need earlier when treatment interventions are more likely to be successful. By reducing their travel time, people are able to stay in their community longer, surrounded by their support network, which supports their overall well-being and missing fewer days from work, and ultimately building stronger communities. So while our primary focus is on air travel, Hope Air offers support across a variety of programs within British Columbia that help patients access care and with unseen costs of travel. All of our travel arrangements are made by our Hope Air client care team, so it is not an expense reimbursement program. When someone contacts us, we will, and gives us the necessary information, we will make the travel arrangements for them based on what they have requested. We will also consider accommodation-only requests for patients who are unable to access air transportation or who are uncomfortable traveling by air. Finally, we also support travel for one escort, as long as they are accompanying the patients. The majority of our flights are with commercial airlines, such as WestJet, Pacific Coastal Airlines, Harbor Air, and Air Canada. However, we do have a very small but mighty volunteer pilot program. In fact, we have one volunteer pilot based out of Qualicum Beach, who has been with us for over five years. Our volunteer pilot program is phenomenal. All of our pilots are fully vetted and use their personal aircraft to transport people who might live in smaller communities that are not served by commercial airlines or who aren't comfortable flying in commercial airlines for a variety of different reasons. In 2023, we supported 196 different communities throughout B.C. I won't read that list to you, but you can see that Vancouver Island is well represented, although we have not seen as much representation in Qualicum Beach. And I'm hoping that by being here today and promoting awareness of our programs that we can support more people in the Qualicum Beach community and surrounding areas. We have seen a huge increase in demand for our services. So you can see here, over the past two and a half years, our demand for our services soared. We had 145% increase last year. This is national data, 2,498 travel arrangements. However, in B.C., specific to B.C., we've supported 2,600 patients and escorts with over 5,400 flights and nearly 4,700 nights of accommodation in B.C. alone. So that's a total of 14,000 travel arrangements in B.C., so B.C. comprises about 70% of all travel within Canada. To be eligible for our programs, a patient needs to have a confirmed medical appointment that requires them to travel. Their treatment must be covered under our provincial health plan, and they can attest to the fact that they are in financial need and report their household income for the past 12 months. It's important to note that Hope Air supports people of all ages and all health conditions, as long as the service is covered under the provincial health plan. We also do not require people to submit tax forms or anything like that. They will attest to their income level, and we assess every application on its merits. So it's also really important to note that we encourage people to share as much information about their individual circumstances as necessary, as they're comfortable, and this could be, you know, additional dependents, they could have lost work, limited income, any individual circumstances that may help us review their application. We approve about over 96% of the applications that we receive. Application is simple. We go to our website, www.hopeair.ca. There is a link there for travel help. Also, a lot of the questions that we typically get are listed there under our B.C. programs because we do operate nationally, and our programs vary by province, so it's important you look for the British Columbia information. And we have two separate programs, one for B.C., one for cancer patients, and one for all other health conditions. So that information will be found on our website. If people do not have access to internet or they're not comfortable applying online, they can have a caregiver or a social worker or a trusted member of their community apply on their behalf. Or they can also phone us at our 1-877 number, and we will be happy to assist them to complete their application. I just wanted to share a couple of testimonials from a couple of our patients. This is Bonnie from Grasmere, B.C. She was traveling for ovarian cancer and had a 10-hour drive to Vancouver for treatment. We were able to support her with free airline travel, a hotel room, and ground transportation once at her destination, and meals as well. We also have Trisha, who traveled from Prince George. She had her diagnosis confirmed during the COVID-19 pandemic, and she was unable to drive alongside with her husband, who also had a medical condition. So we were able to support her with her flights and accommodations as well. About 30% of our Hope Air clients are seniors. Last thing I just wanted to mention is that Hope Air is continuing to bring awareness to the issue of equitable access to health care for everyone. Over a million people in British Columbia live far away from specialty medical care that's provided by our leading hospitals. This year, with the support of over a dozen communities and Parliamentary Secretary for Rural Health, Jennifer Rice, we declared our first-ever Hope Air Day, and this was to help bring awareness to the unique medical travel needs of B.C. residents, to support better health and stronger communities, and ensure no patient is left behind. This is all I have for you today, but please feel free to reach me, excuse me, at saldridge@hopeair.ca, or my phone number is on the screen there, and I think it's in your package.
Thank you, Ms. Aldridge. Next is Mr. Goldfuss. Kevin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, I'll be presenting the Good Neighbor Program to council today and to the community. Before I start, the intent of the Good Neighbor Program is to create awareness, awareness around noise that is generated by aircraft, how that noise may affect generating, may affect neighboring communities, and how can we manage, better manage, and mitigate some of those challenges around noise that is generated by aircraft. So, how did we promote this program? We sent out a couple of thousand emails. We posted on Facebook. We posted on the town's homepage. We published on Town Tidings. We had posters at Town Hall, posters in our kiosks, posters in the library, and we sent out emails to all employees. Noise mitigation at Qualicum Beach Airport must be approached as a collaborative effort between the airport, pilots, airport users, and the community, which seeks to adopt a noise-friendly, minimum disturbance culture. The Flycat 4 Good Neighbor Program endorsed by the Qualicum Beach Airport Users Committee brings stakeholders together to minimize noise disturbances for the surrounding community and creates awareness for pilots. The Flycat 4 Good Neighbor Program provides a mechanism for the airport authority, the town, to present information to pilots on noise mitigation procedures. And this shows an organizational chart of the airport authority. Associated with the Good Neighbor Program, noise mitigation procedures will be evaluated for safety and effectiveness by the airport authority. Matters of noise mitigation from an operational perspective will be discussed biannually or as required at the AUC meeting and with commercial helicopter operators, fixed wing operators, and the scheduled commercial carrier. The Qualicum Beach Airport, constructed in 1954, is open seven days per week and is closed between the hours of 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. daily, except for emergency flights and pre-authorized flights. As a local airport, it provides opportunities for flight training for both fixed wing and rotary wing aircraft, fixed wing aircraft overhaul and maintenance, and has a scheduled commercial carrier, with all traffic using a single runway, runway 2911, six taxiways, and four aprons. The Qualicum Beach Airport, Cat 4, is also home to local pilots, a local flying club, one flight school, air cadets, and Aerosmith search and rescue, some of which operate daily flight operations throughout the year. Aircraft operate both day and night, including takeoffs, departures, approaches, landings, and normal flight circuits. The Flycat 4 Good Neighbor Program recommends and encourages pilots to support and conform to a set of best operational flight procedures, which help to minimize noise disturbances within the surrounding communities. The Flycat 4 Good Neighbor Program provides pilots an awareness and understanding of helpful noise mitigations. So what this map illustrates is, as you can see, runway 11, recommended on departure, track extended runway, center line, then when safe to do so, turn south using best rate of climb before proceeding on course. So just for everybody's information, runway, where are we here? Does this pointer work? Oh, there we go. This is runway 11, okay, to the east, and runway 29 is to the west. So runway 29, recommended on departure, track extended runway center line until the railway tracks. When safe to do so, turn south using best rate of climb before proceeding on course. Now, just a note that I'd like to point out, we do know that most aircraft, in fact, we estimate approximately 99% of pilots are turning south when safe to do so, as this map shows. How do we know that? Some of it is self-reported, and our observation as an airport authority would confirm that as well, and that would be through visual operations, our CCTV system, camera system at the airport as well. During departures and arrivals, follow safe procedures to minimize noise impacts over populated areas. On departure, use best rate of climb. On arrival, use minimum power settings commensurate with safety. Comply with all applicable Transport Canada regulations, procedures, and Canadian flight supplement restrictions, procedures, and requirements. These recommendations are intended to minimize noise disturbances within the surrounding communities. The signs are located at both fuel stations, runway 11 and 29 hold lines. These signs are up now. They've been recently installed, and they have received a very positive response from the aviation community. Noise abatement procedures. So this slide, what it shows is the noise abatement procedure. So right-hand circuits, as per the Canadian Aviation Regulation. It talks about flight instrument, flight rules. It talks about avoiding overflight of noise-sensitive areas at altitudes less than 1,000 feet above ground level. Night restrictions apply between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. And night operations are prohibited if the approach lighting system, precision approach path indicator, is not operating. So what this sketch shows is it shows what is currently the airport's noise-sensitive areas. So this would be Chartwell. This would be the Lee Road area. This would be the subdivision just east of the Lee Road, southeast of the Lee Road area. And this would be the regional area, which is a lot of farmland, and this shows down in here, this shows- regional area, which is a lot of farmland, and this shows down in here, this shows French Helicopters. Turbine-equipped helicopters are prohibited from flying continuous circuits unless prior approval is obtained from the airport manager. All helicopters are prohibited from arriving or departing over the noise-sensitive areas below one thousand feet above ground. Noise abatement procedure. So the N A P procedure applies to all aircraft operating under visual flight rules during weather conditions of two or more miles of visibility. Arriving aircraft must be established on or south of the extended runway center line when within, within two nautical miles of the runway threshold. Departing aircraft must fly the extended runway center line. No turns north are permitted until a thousand feet above sea, sea level, which is eight hundred feet above ground, or two nautical miles from the end of the runway. There are no restrictions on turns to the south. And this map shows the current noise abatement procedure. So two nautical miles to the west, oops. Sorry about that. Two nautical miles to the west would put you over the ocean, and two nautical miles to the east would basically put you over the Church Road area before you're permitted to make a turn to the north. The Fly Cat Four Good Neighbor Program recommends and encourages members of the community to contact and provide feedback regarding noise disturbances within the surrounding community. Uh, noise concerns, queries can be reported on the town's website using the public inquiry uh form. And what airport staff do is we evaluate these uh inquiries, investigate and respond to them in a timely and efficient manner. And thank you for joining us in the Good Neighbor Program.
Thank you, Mr. Goldfuss. Um, next is for the turn for the public, and we have a speaker's list. So who's going to read out the names from the speaker's list? Yes.
Um, query, my apologies. When would you like Kevin to report on the quarter? Would you like that after?
I think we'll take some public input after this presentation, and then we'll do the reporting. Thank you, Kevin. So could I have the speaker's list, or someone's going to read it out for us? You can read it out if you have a microphone there, please.
So first on the speaker's list is John Simmons.
No, you need to address the chair, so for everyone, address the chair. And just push the button, yeah, and just push the button till it's green. There you go. You have the floor.
Good afternoon. I guess it was last summer, last year, April, May, when the Qualcomm Beach Airport became a major flight training center. And I think Seeland deserves some real credit for an uh logistics masterpiece. It was amazing what they did. So, two points. How did that get to be, and why did that get to be? Well, the how was very easy. The council voted and said to Seeland, you may do uh touch-and-go training at our airport. Fair enough. So what method was used to do that? Well, I've been told that it was done in camera. Now, if anyone doesn't know what in camera means, it means it was done behind closed doors, with no public consultation, with no impact assessment, with no health risk assessment, and there's no minutes, and there's no record of who voted yes or who voted no. So that's how it was done. So to make it this brief, let's ask a question, why was that done? Why was, why did they have the Seeland flight training here, not why did you do it the way you did it? I spoke to a longtime friend who, two years ago, retired as an airport manager. Uh, he did most of his work here in B C. And I said to him, why would you want a significantly large flight training school operating at your airport? And the answer was, it's to increase the revenue of the airport. That's what it was. Um, and he gave me two things that, that you would do. You would rent space for people to put their airplanes, you would rent a hangar. He called it land rent. The other one, and the big one, was uh touch-and-go fees or, or landing fees. And it was my impression, I've been here seventeen years, and it was my impression that there were no landing fees at Qualcomm Beach Airport. I've learned subsequently that ISQW does pay landing fees at the airport. And they land, what, twice a day? Is that correct? Twice a day they land? Sir, do you know?
I think it's three times a day.
Three times a day? Okay, thank you. So, Seeland, in a one-hour training flight, will do, I've counted them, I know the time between the plane going past my house. They, sorry. In, in a one-hour training flight, Seeland will do nine or ten touch-and-gos. So in that time, they do what? Three times as many simulated landings as WISKO does. It's also my understanding that Seeland does not pay uh landing fees. So, no, you can correct me if I'm wrong, please, I don't want to make false statements. So if they don't pay landing fees, what was the benefit to Qualcomm Beach of having Seeland here doing flight, uh, touch-and-go flight training, causing all the commotion about noise and whatever? What was the benefit to Qualcomm Beach? My answer is nothing. This was done to us for nothing. That's what we got. Is anyone benefiting from this other than Seeland? I don't know, and I'm not going to say they are. But Qualcomm Beach got nothing. For doing, putting, having them provide us with the benefit to Qualcomm Beach residents has been noise, lead pollution, and a very angrily population. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Can we confirm some of the facts mentioned there? Ms. Varela?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. So a couple points of clarification. First, if council ever goes into in-camera on any meeting, and I'm not aware of the particular reference, council has to go into an in-camera or closed meeting under sections of the community charter. So there's very strict regulations about when council can have a closed meeting. So I think that's important to understand. Um, secondly, council does not have the authority, um, the legislative authority, if you will, to restrict airport operations. So whether it's a training school or other matters that are related to aeronautics, if it's a use that is permitted with the airport, you do not have the authority to restrict that use. So again, I think there's some valid points for clarification there, Your Worship. If I can be of further assistance, please let me know.
Thank you. So who is next on the list?
Next on the list is Marie Noel, and then I'd like to advise on deck is Dillis Williams.
My name is Marie Noel, and I live on Hoylake Road West in Qualcomm Beach. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of my husband and myself. In late January, the committee of the whole meeting addressing the airport report, many members of the public were asking for more detailed information on the financials of the airport. Ms. Varela kindly offered that anyone wanting more information just simply had to ask for it. Staff bent over backwards to assist residents. On February third, we sent Ms. Varela an email asking for more information, details on both the airport and the town-owned golf course. Ten days later, not having received an acknowledgement or any form of reply, we sent a follow-up email. We received an automated response indicating that she was away until February twenty-ninth, so we put it in our diary for follow-up. On March eleventh, we sent another follow-up but received no response from Ms. Varela. On March thirteenth, we received a response from Mr. Herr with links to the Q B Budget and Financial Plan Report, which was published and discussed in mid-January. On March eighteenth, we responded to Mr. Herr advising that we were aware of the published information and provided ten specific questions regarding the airport. We indicated we were looking for detail rather than a speedy reply. By April twenty-fourth, we'd not received a response nor an acknowledgement, so we followed up once more. Again, no response. Followed up again on May twenty-second, to which we received an automated reply advising that Mr. Herr was out of the office until June tenth, and again to redirect inquiries to Ms. Khan, Manager of Finance. We forwarded Ms. Khan the stream of email on May twenty-second, and again received no reply nor acknowledgement. At this point, we're beginning to think that we would never get a reply. We were thinking that those in charge didn't know the answers to our questions or didn't want us to know the answers. Both scenarios are troubling. On June tenth, we attended the Town Hall Open House, which was hosted by Counselor Skipsy. We gave her copies of all the correspondence, and she indicated that she would take it up with Ms. Varela and that perhaps the town could provide the information at the meeting scheduled for June nineteenth. On June twelfth, we received an email from Mr. Herr advising that he was working on a response to the questions posed, but many of the questions were outside of his area of expertise, and he would need to collaborate with others and expected to get back to us by next week, presumably June nineteenth.
Excuse me, was the hand being raised? Yes, point of order?
Yes, Mayor Wiesberg, sorry for the interruption. I just want to, you know, remind council on the gallery that the topic is, is about the airport. If there's concerns about the town's correspondence system, staff are more than happy to address those, but I don't think this is the venue. Thank you.
Yeah, this is not about that. It is about the airport.
I would agree, I would agree with the, with the speaker that this question is about the airport and communications is, is part of the whole process. Thank you.
Can you continue? On June twenty-nine, sorry, June twenty-eighth, a full hundred and forty-six days from the initial request, we received some answers to our questions. I want to say at this point that I'm not a financially illiterate person. I have an MBA from Dalhousie, and I've spent over thirty years in my working life analyzing financial statements. I have provided the list of the original questions and the town's reply in my little handout. The important questions not fully answered are number four and number three. Is it fair to assume that the town uses a cost-centered approach and that all work and expenses performed at the airport are reflected in the airside and terminal expense lines on page one oh six? Is this an inclusive reflection of the town's resources spent at the airport? When cost overruns arise to the airport improvement initiatives that are not fully covered by specific grants, where are they recorded, and does the town do project-based reporting? I have learned over the years that the choices made when presenting financial information can paint a very different picture. To summon without the financial expertise to do a deep dive into the numbers, it appears the airport has a modest financial impact to the average taxpayer. Reality might be quite different. Reviewing the two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-eight financial plan, we have projected or operating loss of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. We also have a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred of projected capital expense that will not be covered by the one point two some-odd million grants. Total projected monies to be spent at the airport from current taxes and reserves, which are previously paid taxpayer money, comes out to three hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred for the year two thousand and twenty-four. The information I was requesting from town staff was to enable an accurate determination of the trends, both for operating losses and also capital expenditures at the airport, which are not fully funded by grants. I've attempted to review the information publicly available and determine the following estimates. For two thousand and twenty-three, we have a hundred and eighty-seven thousand in projected year-end actual operating loss on page one oh six. Two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in capital expense as a portion not paid by grants. There were five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in total representing four projects. We don't know what the overruns of those four projects were. We also had a twenty thousand dollar airport structure review on page eighty-one. There was a ten thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollar cost overrun on that structure review, which I only found by looking at the checks that the town issues over twenty-five thousand dollars. We have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in runway twenty-nine survey and tree management on page eighty-one, unknown as the cost overrun on that work. In total, it's six hundred and twenty-seven thousand and forty-two dollars of taxpayer-funded monies to support the airport. For two thousand and twenty-two, the annual report does not include any detailed airport operating info. We project a sixty-four thousand some-odd uh loss in operating, and we have no idea what all of the actual capital costs are. There was a replacement of a jet A fuel system, to which we got a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar contribution by way of a grant, but we don't know what the actual cost of that project was. There was also an airport lighting project started at nine hundred thousand dollars in the budget. It grew to one point one four in the budget by the end of the budget negotiations. Narrative in the two thousand and twenty-two annual report indicates that one point four million dollar grant was received, fully funding the airport lighting system. The same report on page forty says the lighting upgrades were completed at a cost of one point three four one million. The ACAP program covered a hundred percent of infrastructure costs. I'm not sure what that actually means, but presumably infrastructure costs. The year-end audited financial statements show the town received one million and seventy-five thousand dollars towards that project. Based on the info released, I'm unable to reconcile a reasonably accurate assessment of the total taxpayer money spent for the year two thousand and twenty-two. Using that same approach of hunt and peck through council minutes and various financial reports, I conservatively estimate total taxpayer money in two thousand and twenty-one to be three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, comprised of sixty-five thousand in operating loss and three hundred thousand for a non-grant-funded airport sewer extension. Year two thousand and twenty was approximately four hundred and fifty-four thousand. Going back to the more recent numbers in my estimate for the, for the most recent two years of two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, we spent or will be spending over a million dollars of Q B taxpayer money at the airport. That equates to almost fourteen hundred dollars a day. I'll give you a minute to reflect upon that. Fourteen hundred dollars a day. I also note that that doesn't include the cost of administrative and project management work completed at City Hall on behalf of the airport. It's also over and above the generous B C and federal taxpayer-funded airport grants the town has received. Importantly, council and other taxpayers shouldn't be relying on my forensic accounting skills. Rather, council needs to request a detailed and accurate accounting of the money spent to support our airport over the last five years and provide a report to Q B taxpayers. Such a report should include all costs, including overhead of management provided by finance and others in City Hall, all the consultant reports, the insurance cost, and all the work at the airport by both Transportation and Parks Department. I would suggest this report also includes the actual cap expenditures and actual grants received. Alternatively, if council is concerned of the amount of staff resources required to put this information together, council could choose to engage the appropriate accounting consultant to do a forensic audit and provide council and the Q B taxpayers with credible information. Concurrently, council should request management at the airport to review current pricing for all services and bring them in line with other airports in the province. For example, Tofino charges lease application fees and requires prospective tenants to bear the cost of having their unit connected to water and sewer. The ministry, excuse me. The Ministry of Forests and Wildfire pays landing fees ranging from twelve dollars to three hundred and fourteen dollars per landing to other airports. Qualcomm Beach appears to be the only airport not charging. If you look at my handout, there's a scheduler of what other airports are collecting. Golden B C Municipal Airport charges landing fees to visiting pilots. Campbell River's commercial passenger fees include a passenger fee for both enplaned and deplaned passengers. They also apply an airport improvement fee and a regulatory recovery fee. Trail Airport has a set policy of marking up fuel, fuel by twenty percent to help offset airport costs. I'm not an expert in airport pricing, but after doing a little bit of internet research, it appears to me that the Q B airport revenue lines could and should be improved. Airport management should provide council with a report recommending new pricing and an adjusted revenue budget with line-by-line detail. The financial report and the airport management enhanced revenue report will give council the ability to review and assess both monies in- the ability to review and assess both monies in and monies out at the airport. Council will then be in a position to make an informed assessment as to the ongoing viability of our airport. Armed with the right information, council then can make the choice to re-approach the RDN to fund the airport on a regional basis, or seek other solutions to permanently resolve the ongoing funding requirements. I remind you, $1,400 a day, it's a big number. If after armed with full and completed information, council determines the airport will likely always be a drain on our community resources, council should begin to consider alternative long-term options. I'm not advocating to close and decommission the airport today. There are a host of other options to explore, such as negotiating with the RDN, negotiate with Transport Canada to run and take over the site. They currently own and operate six other airports, including Port Hardy, right here on the island. If the airport has a commercial passenger and cargo scale necessary to be self-sufficient, we could seek a private operator to own and run the airport, as done by many other regional airports, including Nanaimo and Duncan. The town could renegotiate the terms of the land grant. We need to consider all long-term options for this 160-acre site. As an example, using a conservative formula of four homes per quarter acre, this site could provide 2,560 new homes that people could actually afford while providing the town with a significant increase in the tax base. Alternatively, the site could be a solar-powered facility to feed the grid, ensuring our town has access to affordable power. I'm sure there's many more options to explore. The residents of QB are deeply divided about the value of our airport. Some are concerned about financial impacts, others about the environmental harms from related pollution and noise issues that affect their daily, their day-to-day quality of life. Others feel the land could be better used to create much-needed additional housing. But our starting point needs to be accurate and full disclosure of the real costs of owning and operating our airport. In closing, as David Eby refers to challenging situations, I see our airport as Qualicum's own little dumpster file. I urge council to put a real focus on the airport and imagine this airport as either financially self-sufficient or put to some other use that better aligns with the town's long-term strategic goals. Again, I thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Noel. Ms. Varela?
Thank you, your worship. I would like to sincerely apologize to the speaker for their experience of trying to engage with the town. We do try very hard, and in this case, I clearly didn't make the bar, so I fully bear the responsibility of that. And I think now with our new public inquiry system and the tracking numbers that are applied, I think it will help us deal with the sheer volume of emails we get. So again, my sincere apologies, and the buck stops right here, so thank you.
Ms. Varela, and also a phone to Mr. Hare. We are in the process of budgeting and reporting. I don't expect you to have a response today, but we got some good information. Thank you for putting it all in writing, so we can examine that and get a report back from our senior administrator for finance. Thank you. Who's next on the line on the list?
So, Dillis Williams is...
So, a member of council would like to interject. Go ahead.
Just one more thing, too, and I don't know the current state of Ms. Varela's email, but on the previous CAO, when he left, he had about 2,000 emails in his email box to go through. So, when you maybe don't get a response from your CAO right away, just do understand they get a lot of emails from everyone in town, and so it, sometimes things do get missed. I think it's a little bit more efficient now, but it can be very busy. And also, too, if I may, if you have a very lengthy written submission, maybe sort of summarize. Do provide us with a written submission or provide the town with it, but just, I'm looking in the room, there's a lot of folks, and if everyone takes the exact same amount of time, we might be here quite late. And I'm just trying to do, like, you know, there's great information here, but maybe just summarize if you have a written submission as well.
And the other thing, you gave a lot of good information, and I know that's on the minds of many people, what you just outlined. So if you have a similar concern, you can say, "I agree with Ms. Noel," and perhaps forget a response back without going through the same information details. Thank you. Who's next, Ms. Tyla?
Dillis Williams, and following Dillis would be Joanne Tudor.
Ms. Williams, just push the button so it's green. There you go.
Okay, thank you very much. My name's Dillis Williams, and I live in Qualicum Woods, right under the flight path. And I'd just like to say a little bit more about the touch and go, although Marie did talk about it. The majority of the noise complaints and the lead pollution in Qualicum is coming, as we all know, from the repetitive circuits being done by the Flight School Sealand, who I understand is based in Campbell River. A lesson typically is seen to include anywhere from eight to 12 orbits or circuits, same path, same timings over residents and schools and daycare. And typically, in a day, we might see 80 to 85 orbits in a day, but of note, on May 11th, we saw over 116 orbits that day. Other airports in Canada are now charging for touch-and-go landings, and Marie adhered to it. I spoke with Billy Bishop Airport in Toronto in Ontario on the island. They're charging $27 per touch-and-go. I did ask the airport manager there, what was the reason for them charging touch-and-go fees? Was it to reduce the traffic? I got a vehement no, but that did, was the effect, but it was strictly for revenue purposes. Oshawa in Ontario charges $15, Fort Mac is charging $15 per touch-and-go. It's cheaper than the common charge, I understand, of $25 in the UK and 20 in Germany. Some small municipal airports in the US are apparently amending their municipal code to ban touch-and-go completely. Now, I think if we in Qualicum Beach were charging touch-and-go fees, we could typically make that $1,400 a day that Marie adhered to a moan ago. So my question to everyone is, why is Qualicum Beach not charging the Flight School for these touch-and-go landings? A landing fee is charged, as I understand, to ISQ Air, but not to Sealand at all. This would help to offset our ongoing losses, which I've just heard about, shocking losses. The town has not published any airport financial information, as I understand it, since 2021. We don't get the actuals, and we just heard from Marie what the numbers were. I looked into these touch-and-go fees, because we typically hear when we make a complaint, even though we have video of it and several pictures of it, that we get an answer back that we did not have a plane leave the airport at that time. We don't have anyone, don't have anyone on CCTV, and they did adhere to noise abatement procedures, which when we have pictures and video that they don't, it's pretty hard to swallow that answer. Touch-and-gos could be easily implemented, as I understand, by a program, a computer program called Vector, which many, many of these small municipal airports are using. It can be installed in a day, it's fully automated, and it can photo and bill the pilot and the airline directly to the plane's owner. So there would be no cost involved to the town for personnel. And on the subject of orbits, it's interesting, in 1978, Alderman Skipsy, who I believe is the father of our current councillor Skipsy, introduced a policy relating to flight training. There had been numerous complaints about noise at that time, 1978, that's 46 years ago, particularly on weekends. And I'm sure you all know this book, it's the history of Qualicum Beach. And on page 145, to quote Alderman Skipsy, and this was a decision by the council at that time, "No circuits by flying school students are to be flown on Saturdays, Sundays, or holidays between, guess when, May 1st to September 30th." So I think by approving Sealand to do touch-and-go training with absolutely no restrictions whatsoever, because they're starting in the morning and they're going off till nine o'clock at night, council have violated their own 46-year-old policy, which was implemented because at the time of 1978, of noise complaints, which have certainly escalated considerably since then. You should immediately implement and impose this restriction on Sealand. The users of the airport should be paying for the airport, not the tax-paying public. Thanks for your help.
Thank you. So who is next?
Hi, I'm Joanne Tudor. I live in Qualicum Woods, and I'll start by thanking the pilots who voluntarily avoid populated residential communities. Your courtesy and consideration is greatly...
Please, please address the chair.
Appreciated.
Thank you. Do not turn, address council. Thank you.
Pilots, thank you pilots back there. I also appreciate having Medevac, search and rescue, fire safety, and ISQ Air as public services. I realize that when the airport was built in the 50s, town planners may not have foreseen future growth of the airport and the community, and that's why we have the problem we have today of coexisting in a small space with residential and airports so close together. Yet surely, with the creative power in this room, we can come up with ways of doing things that can work for everyone. The noise continues over my and near my home in Qualicum Woods. It affects my peace and the enjoyment of my home and massage therapy clinic. I've counted as many as 62 loud passes near or over my home in a single day. I'm a registered paying business in Qualicum Beach, and I worry about how excessive airplane noise will affect my business. I only send in a complaint if there's more than 30 passes in a day, except for planes flying after 10:00 PM. I understand with an airport in our community, there will be, there will be noise, I understand. It's when the numbers become excessive that it grates on the nerves and affects one's well-being. We know that leaded fuel is used at our airport. Leaded fuel and greenhouse gases are a huge concern for the health of communities and for climate change. The Government of Canada website shows that air transportation is now the second-largest source of lead pollution in Canada. According to Health Canada, the latest medical and scientific research shows that absorption of even very low levels of lead into the blood may have harmful health effects on the intellectual and behavioral development of Inc. infants and young children. Arrow View Elementary School is about 500 meters under the aircraft flight path of the Qualicum Beach Airport, which is a distance of concern expressed in a number of studies on the impact of lead on children. According to the Government of BC's website, Health Link BC, in adults, lead exposure may cause memory loss, weakness and muscle problems, and elevated lead levels from aviation fuel have been linked to increasing cardiac mortality rates in adults living or working near an airport. There are unleaded aviation fuels available and already in use in the US, which, and which have been studied here in Canada and found to be safe for the use of a majority of single-piston airplanes. Can we take action more in line with environmental stewardship and reduce pollution and greenhouse gases, putting community health and safety first? And finally, I was shocked when, after all our efforts and concerns, the town gave a letter of support for another Flight School. Another Flight School will only exacerbate the existing noise and pollution problem. As our elected representatives, please ensure Transport Canada is fully aware of our community's concerns about a second Flight School. Let's implement some of the viable solutions we have available, and let's work together in the spirit of environmental stewardship to make the health and safety of our community our top priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have a petition from 2024 spring and summer for you with the over 80 signatures here. Thank you.
Please present it to our government administration. Thank you. And perhaps we knew that this issue about a letter to Transport Canada about a second Flight School would come up, so I gave Ms. Varela a heads-up and say, "Would you please read out the letter and also the rationale for it?" Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. There were actually two separate letters that were sent, the first indicating a council resolution that a letter of support should be sent after council had been advised that it does not have the legislative authority to restrict airport operations. The authority of decision-making for aeronautics, including flight schools, is federal jurisdiction, so a Flight School is not something that the municipality can approve. Because the Flight School is a permitted use at the airport, council also can't act as a quasi-competition bureau to say one is enough. You couldn't do that with the barber shop nor a Flight School. So we sent a subsequent letter clarifying the town's understanding, so I'll read that aloud. Further to our letter of April 2024, and at the request of the applicant, we are providing the subsequent letter of support for Island Hopper Air Training's application to Transport Canada to operate a Flight School from Qualicum Beach Airport, recognizing that the airport was developed on land provided by Crown Grant for the sole purpose of operating a public airport with associated uses, and that the operation of a Flight School is a permitted land use at the Qualicum Beach Airport. Second bullet is that council does not have the legislative authority to restrict airport operations, and that the authority of decision-making for aeronautics, including Flight Schools, is federal jurisdiction. And finally, that the town's goal is to balance the operations of our municipally-owned airport and neighborhood expectations. So council, when it approves, supports, denies, really has to have rationale for why a use wouldn't be supported or, i.e., permitted. In this case, you already have a Flight School, which is a permitted use. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Who's next on the list, Ms. Tyla?
We have Todd Provost, followed by Christine Purdy.
Hello, there we go. Mayor, council, and CAO Varela, thank you for this committee of the whole meeting on the very important subject of the airport. I would like to start by repeating what we have said many times before when discussing airport issues. It is our goal to coexist with our airport in a way that meets the needs of our entire community. We are supplying the following feedback in the hopes of improving the quality of life and well-being of our community. Thank you for sharing the actions Airport Information Document Ahead, which was referred to by Mr. Goldfuss briefly. This document shows the town making progress on improvements to our community. However, residents are still contacting us on an almost daily basis to voice their concerns on the issues of airport noise and leaded fuel use at the airport. The new document mentions that the Good Neighbor Program is promoted through the town's website. I've looked, and I can't find anything about the Good Neighbor Program on your website, and that was as recent as last night, I checked again, just to make sure my information was correct. We would appreciate this information to be shared with pilots and the public. Now, the signage currently posted at the airport is helpful and appreciated, and Mr. Goldfuss referred to it in his presentation, but the wording on the sign for planes flying outwards towards Qualicum, which is runway 29, uses the wording, and I quote, "Two railway tracks. When safe to do so, turn south." Suggesting planes continue to the railway tracks before turning south is part of the issue for residents still experiencing disturbing noise on a daily basis. We would ask that the language on the signs and the Good Neighbor literature for runway 11 and 29 be consistent with the language "When safe to do so, turn south," eliminating the words "to runway." We have sent logs, photos, videos, and complaints which support our concerns about pilots choosing to fly directly out over Qualicum Woods, and also choosing to fly over the Chrysselton Park Village Way area. We do understand it is allowed, but we also know other options are available. Thank you to the pilots who are already making flight choices with our community in mind. However, councillor Skipsy herself witnessed the impact of low-flying airplanes on our residents when those choices aren't made. At our community picnic on June 9th this year, she observed numerous flights that were flying low over the area of Chrysselton Park, and we had to pause our conversations as they flew over. This is an experience many residents have reported to us, that when planes fly over, they can't even have conversations with, with each other or neighbors, or... So that's, you know, one concern that was witnessed directly by councillor Skipsy. Transport Canada confirmed that pilots do have the option of flying... have the option of flying out towards the less populated area in the direction of Parksville. But this option is not directly depicted on mapping on page three. Now, I saw a version today that does indicate some flight towards Parksville, so I appreciate that. But I think there, there is some better mapping that maybe could make that clearer and help out. So we would ask that the mapping be updated to include some of the other options available. We are again offering to discuss and assist with a noise-sensitive area expansion, which we and Transport Canada believe is the way forward to assist with noise issues. We are discouraged that the statement on page five of your document seems to indicate the process is too resource-intensive, and the reader is given the impression it would not meet with success. On the contrary, our meeting with Transport Canada in April 24 had a very positive tone. Mr. Sarazin of Transport Canada stated, and I quote, "You have the advantage of having a published noise-abatement procedure already. You are looking for a modification, not totally new. I think you're on the right track with a noise-sensitive area modification. You have challenges and bumps on the road, but keep going. You have a good understanding of the process." With these words in mind, we would ask council to make the application to Transport Canada for an expanded noise-sensitive area and immediate priority, as residents are living with airport noise impacts multiple times a day on a daily basis. And I reviewed the agenda information ahead of time, and as we can see from the complaint process, that, that's supported by the complaints you're receiving as well. On the issue of leaded aviation fuel, we have provided council and staff a number of letters on the use of leaded aviation fuel by pilots in our community, and the serious health risks associated with its use, which is especially prevalent when planes take off and land. And you've heard some other people concerned about touch-and-go, is what that's sometimes called. But all takeoff and landings have more prevalence of lead being dispersed. We have provided staff with the information on unleaded fuel options certified as being safe for use by the FAA for many years now. Scientific research shows there is no safe level of lead exposure for human beings, but especially for children. This effect has been shown to be significant as far as 3 kilometers of an airport. Pilots we have spoken to have indicated that as soon as unleaded aviation fuel is available to them, they will use it. We understand that our airport cannot supply unleaded aviation fuel until it is approved by the Canadian Government. But as a local airport authority, it is within your ability to indicate to the federal government the concerns of the community over leaded fuel and to ask for change. As we have already done, we would ask that council write to Environment and Climate Change Canada and to Transport Canada, requesting they approve unleaded aviation fuel products for use in Canada, and that the Government of Canada cease the exemption for leaded aviation fuel. Now, the second flight school, I know there's been some reference, and Ms. Varela addressed some of the background. That's the first time we're hearing the timeline today, that it was decided back in April. So I'm just going to comment that a second flight school in our community will only add to the already existing concerns and anxiety from the noise and lead that comes from having an airport in our community. Council should strive to release as much information as possible, as often as possible, to demonstrate its commitment to the principles of transparency and accountability. Why did the town then choose to make their decisions on a second flight school in camera with absolutely no public consultation ahead of making your decision or any opportunity for public input into this decision? I understand the community charter in section 90, and there's a majority of the time, the word "may" is used. And I understand the sensitivity about confidential, commercial information, and a lot of the other applications. However, there is a lot of information that council can also reveal to the public without jeopardizing any of that. And so that is what we're asking for, is that more openness is occurring on that front. Has the town received an independent legal opinion on the abilities of municipalities to manage airport? I, I heard Ms. Varela mention that there are limits to the Aeronautics Act of what municipalities can do. I understand that. I sympathize. But you are managers of the airport, and I think asking for a legal opinion that asks what is our ability to manage airports as managers of the airport would be helpful. The Union of BC Municipalities has produced a document which explains the abilities of town to make certain choices and decisions as it relates to the community and businesses. And many more resources are available on this topic. So I'll just ask that council review all of the options available to them on the airport, such as seeking assistance from other municipalities and legal advice, and to make choices that put our community first in terms of health, safety, and well-being. And also, if we could have the actual case law that I've heard referred to a number of times, it says you, you are very limited on what you can do. That would be helpful, because it's, it's hard to understand for a lot of people when it's just stated that, oh, we're not allowed to do this, but specifics aren't given sometimes. So we would appreciate that, too. So, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counsel Harrison?
Just going through the chair. I think it might be something similar to what Ms. Varela was about to say. But I was just going to confirm through the chair to Ms. Varela, have we reached out to town's legal staff to get that information about what the restrictions are?
Ms. Vella?
Thank you, your worship. So, legal council has supported the position that council does not have the legislative authority to restrict airport uses and associated uses, or airport operations and associated uses. The authority of decision-making for aeronautics, including flight schools, is federal jurisdiction. And while I don't have the case law at hand, there certainly have been municipalities who have attempted to use business licensing or bylaws as tools to restrict airport operations without success. So, thank you. With your indulgence, your worship, I just want to note, thank you for looking for the Good Neighbor Program on the website. We will be posting that after tonight's meeting. The town's common practice is to introduce the program first and then post it on the website. But I do want to assure the public that the signage is installed at the airport, the promotion with the users is underway, and has been well-received. So thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Ms. Tyler, who's next?
Christine Purdy, followed by Carol Dow, and then Fred Dow.
He's on. Okay.
Would you touch the base for the button for the microphone?
Thank you. My name is Christine Purdy. My husband and I have lived on Juniper Drive in Qualicum Woods for the past 32 years. Approximately eight years ago, we suddenly noticed planes flying over our neighborhood and home. As a member of the Qualicum Residents' Association and executive at the time, we started getting complaints from residents regarding the changed flight path with the noise level and low-flying planes. Our Residents' Association took the complaints from the residents to the town officials, mayor and councils. We asked the question, why did the flight path change from Rupert Road to Qualicum Woods? We were continually told the flight path had not changed. We continued to question the town staff at council meetings over the years, sent in numerous letters of complaints from residents, petitions which we presented to the town. We still did not get an answer to the question, why the change in flight paths. We have recently noticed a marked increase of private flight school training circuits that seem to last most of the day, flying a circular route to practice touch-and-go landings and takeoffs. This happens around our neighborhood and home. Some days, the noise level is at a point where we cannot enjoy outdoor living. The flight path directions do not seem to change. Some planes do fly to the left, and, but most take the route to the right. We now have become aware of our major, mayor and councillors have advised the town to accept and forward to Transport Canada, which you have just now explained to us. But why could you not send a letter to Transport Canada along with this request, saying that this would have a big impact on our community? Where, where are these flight schools going to fly? Over the same area that they're flying now? Last Monday, we had from 9:00 till about 4:30, a plane circling around our house and neighborhood, which Joanne Tudor has just told you. And the noise is so loud, it's like a lawnmower in the sky. And it's above our house, and as she pointed out, the leaded fuel. We have young children and babies next door, across the street, down the road, in the area, and what effect is that having on them? And just to finish off, all residents deserve to live a life, a life of quiet enjoyment on their property. Thank you.
Thank you. I can, I can speak to the, to the issue of changing of the flight path. What happened before 1516, there was a sign, great big blue sign, that asked pilots to turn to the south upon takeoff. When an inspection was done, I believe by Transport Canada, they said, you can't have that sign there like that. So we had to remove it. And that's what caused at that time some suspicion that the flight path had been changed, but it has not. It's just that the sign was removed. And so now we have new signage that comply with Transport Canada, and hopefully that will help mitigate some of the concerns. But there was never a change of flight path. It was just that there was a sign that was apparently not legal, but it encouraged pilots to, upon takeoff, turn south. Who's next then? Oh, Ms. Vella?
Thank you, your worship. It may be worth noting that the town cannot restrict the volume of air traffic that is flying over, arriving at, or departing from the airport. It had been pointed out to me that that hadn't been stated clearly before. So I did want to just offer that to the conversation.
Yeah, I think we've heard repeatedly that the concern is about touch-and-go orbits from flight schools that cause the concern of their quality of life and also regarding the lead. So we need to examine that. This is just to hear from the public. But obviously, that is a serious concern, that first of all, we don't get paid for these touch-and-go, and that they have this increasing amount of orbits that we need to address with that. Tyler, what is, who's on the last next?
Carol Dow, followed by her husband Fred Dow, and then Sue Willis.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. We need your help. As you can see from the numbers here, there's a lot of people that are very concerned. I'm just going to hold up. Joanne was very kind to present to you the most recent petitions. And so as you already have the previous petitions from January, February, from the airport meeting, I'll just, you know, we're up to over 250 petition signatures that are very concerned about the noise and the flights. So just going to hand that over to Fred. I have just received a copy of the Airport User Committee summary. I am so thankful to Twyla, I think is her name, that provided this. Here are some questions, and I hope that you can give me some answers. The committee is made up of, it names several people in the user committee. Is that still how it will be functioning? The committee will have, you know, the skydive, the restaurant, so on and so on, and two members at large, and I wondered who they are?
Thank you, worship. So coming out of the commission and committee review, council made the decision to dissolve that Airport Users Committee as a committee of council, and to restructure it as a management committee. So the Airport Users Group will interface with the airport manager, and then if governance decisions are required, the airport manager will bring those to council. So it's a distinctly different, it's no longer a committee of council, it's at what we would call an operations committee.
Thank you. And so will there be representation from Qualicum Woods since we are the nearest residents to takeoff and landing?
Thank you. This actually will function very much as a technical advisory committee. So I think the airport manager might share the noise complaint stats. Again, those are also going to be shared with the public and council on a regular basis. So as much information as we can share, we, we will, between the committee, management, the council, and the public. But again, it's a very distinctly different committee, so it doesn't have members at large in the composition.
Yes. I appreciate your reply. And again, will there be some way that there will be representation of our Qualicum Woods since we are so directly affected? That's what I'm really trying to find out.
So your way to interface isn't through that committee. It is at these opportunities to address your council directly.
So I ask you, if we can somehow have representation from Qualicum Woods Residents' Association, where some 500 homes, to have at least one or two people that can be part of that, what was it called? Management committee? Okay.
The idea is that you speak to council. Council makes the decisions. This is just a technical advisory committee. So by any means, that's why we have these committee of the whole meetings, where it's not just one member of council, representing council at these committees, but all of council can hear the issues and the concerns at the same time. And as a council, our committee of the whole, make a recommendation to council for council to make an effect on these, on these requirements, on these concerns.
Yes. Thank you.
So it's no longer a committee.
To her, to Ms. Vella, was the name of the committee. I didn't quite get that. But I certainly respect that you will be making that decision. Thank you. In this report from the consultant, they do make reference constantly to the committee. That's why I'm interested to know how it's going to be made up. There, in their observations, they said that, I've highlighted these areas. And I would like to ask if this document from the consultant can be part of the meeting today?
Yes.
It's about a five-page.
Regarding the airport, yes.
May we have that? Thank you very much. One of the statements made here for their mandate is that there is an unclear mandate regarding noise mitigation complaints. And we, that is very important to us, because we're dealing with the noise very much. And there is also going on to say no policy regarding expectations on public delegations or input, or where import complaints or concerns should be directed, leading to frustration from residents. And I can say that with a capital frustrations. Okay. So, and the desire by some is for more frequent meetings to make, to take progress, to make progress. I, it's our impression that two meetings a year couldn't possibly cover so many of our concerns. As you said, this meeting could go on to midnight, I think somebody said that, if we're all allowed to speak. So somehow, we, if we can ask that these meetings would be held at least quarterly, would be my impression. That's, I'm asking. The other thing that, on page 14 of this report, it says, "Composition and recruitment best practices. Ensure the committee membership represents diversity of the community." I think I've pretty much covered that as the importance of Qualicum Woods being represented. Going on to page 15, about three-quarters of the way down, it says, "Clarity in how the committee interacts with the republic, with the public." So in this summary, we can see over and over again that they are concerned that the public is being included. I, I would ask you to please do that. And further in those bullets, it talks about promoting transparency and building trust with the public. We want so much to be able to communicate with you. It's very important to us. And I'm getting to the last points now, which were, again, it's public engagement opportunities enable the municipal councils to better understand the citizens' views. enable the municipal councils to better understand the citizens' views. And we ask for that. The affected neighborhoods are highlighted in that section. And the last couple are, "Provide clarity on public opportunities for engagement with council and committees." And again, it says to engage with the committee. So I would just like to conclude. We've just come from our beloved family farm back east, where it was very quiet. And when we came home, I could not believe, when I heard there's going to be a possible second school, adding even more to the difficulty of all these air flights over our house. To give you an idea, I have a guest at my home from back east. Within every five to 10 minutes, there was a flight directly, we are in the flight path on Hawthorne Drive. We had to stop conversation over and over and over again. And so I would like to conclude by asking Todd, who also was at our house about, it was yesterday or the day before, and I believe that he may have recorded the sound, just to give you an idea. Perhaps, if we have your permission.
Counsel, can you?
It's about five or 10 seconds.
Are you gave it? Listening to the sound of that airport? I think I don't see any opposition.
This is over our house often. I mean, many, many times.
I don't hear any opposition, there's some concerns, but go ahead.
I would just suggest, though, that maybe we'd be better served if individual members of council want to visit, just because we have no idea of how that sound was produced. That's all.
No.
I'm just saying, we can drop by the house and listen in person.
Okay. Can I? I'm gonna allow to listen to the airplane. Go ahead. Get this over with.
I can assure you, I made this recording on Monday, this past Monday.
Can I have silence in the gallery, please?
I can just, I can assure you, I made, I was over at Ms. Dow's house, and she said, oh, here we go again, here we go again. So I had my phone with me. The recordings were made on Monday, there have been no additions or deletions since the time, but this is just one example of. And that, I was sitting in, on their deck, and that was just, I pulled my phone out, and she asked me to do that, so.
Thank you.
I can assure you that, that's an example of what we put up with every day.
Sure. I understand.
And very often.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So next is your husband, Fred.
Yes, I'll just leave the microphone on. Do you have anything?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this has been a tremendous meeting. I've been to many council meetings, and this has been the most interesting one I've been to and learned so much. I had a lot to say, but people know more than I do say. I just wanted to clarify what Mayor Tunis said about the flight path not being changed. It's semantics, but the flight path that most pilots fly is not necessarily the legal flight path. It's not illegal to fly any which way you want when you take off from Qualicum Woods, from Qualicum Airport, rather. I've flown here quite often. I had an airplane that, I flew between my different offices, and we were told with the old sign to turn left after we took off 29. And most of us took off 29 to go north. And it's so simple, you just turn left and you avoid Qualicum Woods. But after the inspector, Department of Transport inspector said, no, you can't do that, then some of us said, oh, well, what the hell, so we just fly straight out over Qualicum Woods and the park, Kristen Park. So the path changes according to each pilot. And somehow, getting it across to the pilots, they cooperated before, and they can cooperate again. And it's a matter of publicity and education, and I think that's beginning to happen, which is good. That's only, I'll give you the rest of my 10 minutes. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Flavsky, who's next?
So we have Sue Willis, followed by Sigmund Sort, and then Jaclyn Guest.
There is, the gentleman that spoke had lost his chair, there is a vacant chair.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, is this working?
All right.
Is this working? Okay. So some of the things I was gonna say were already said, so I'll just leave those. I did want to address the noise. May 11th, which was mentioned before, I don't know if it was Mother's Day weekend, but it was so terrible. We had visitors from Australia. I wrote a letter about it of complaint. We honestly could not have a conversation. And it was repeated, like I'd think, oh my God, that's a really loud one, and I would stop and wait and wait and wait, and I go, okay, we'll quickly talk. And then another one would come, oh my God, I can't believe I have to wait. So I actually ran inside and typed a letter, because that's how disturbing it was to us, a lot louder than what that recording sounded. Anyways, that's a side note. And I understand by reading, there's a bulletin online about the Good Neighborhood Plan, understand that there is a new, and actually listening, that there's gonna be better communication now from people with comments and complaints. Since that has been put in, I still feel that my letters are not being read thoroughly. I wrote a letter on May, actually, May 11th, that day, filing a complaint about the noise that was, and my letter was addressed by Kevin Goldfuss. And he let me know about the Good Neighbor Plan, that is asking pilots to voluntarily turn south, left, on takeoffs when safe. If he had read my letter properly, and I understand you get a lot of letters, and it's hard, but the reply would not have suggested that this plan would help, as our household is on Rupert Road. So I know a lot of the people living in Qualicum Woods would love it if the planes turned left, but I would not like it, and neither would my neighbors. So I'm not sure what we can come up with there, but moving the noise from one neighborhood to another might quiet a loud bunch, but then the other bunch is gonna become loud, so I'm not sure. And I just felt dismissed because the response to my complaint was void. It didn't make any sense. Well, why would that make sense? Oh, don't worry, we're gonna fix it with this Good Neighborhood Plan, we're gonna make them fly over your house instead. So to me, it didn't make sense. I wrote another letter on June 23rd, and this was filing a complaint about the noise and the leaded fuel, which we've heard about, as well as asking about how much of our taxes go towards supporting the airport, because on my tax slip that I got, I looked down and it said the things that it goes to, and one was the airport. My questions were not answered in the reply. Instead, I was sent a link to a generic information sheet that did not address any of my concerns. Again, I felt dismissed. So my suggestion is that if you're putting in a new program to address complaints, it would be appreciated if the letters were actually, like, read and taken to heart, because we are people living in the community, trying to live our lives, and willing to work on solutions, but we need to be heard. That was my one thing. And I listened to the Hope Air, and the, I can't remember the name of the helicopter one, but that's awesome, they do great work. I am totally in support of search and rescue, firefighters, emergency services, awesome. I'm proud that they look after that in our community. And in one of my letters, I suggested a less intrusive way for the helicopter training to carry on, just a suggestion, was never addressed back to me. Again, I didn't feel heard. I don't, however, support the use of the commercial airline when there's two other easily accessible airport choices nearby, being Comax and Denaimo. And I also don't support the use of the, I call them hobby flyers, and I have hobby, everyone has a hobby. But I don't see why the residents of Qualicum Beach should be financially supporting the airport through our taxes, from what I heard before, if all that information is correct, for a handful of people and a commercial airline business, when there is a great deal of opposition to the airport by the residents of the town. And I'm extremely opposed to the hobby pilots and the commercial airlines dropping exhaust from their fuel on our residents. And, you know, I'm also disturbed by the noise. And this is kind of a funny little side point, but sometimes things just don't make sense to you. So I have horses and I have dogs, and I'm expected to clean up after them on the trails, the beach, there's certain guidelines when you can take them to the beach, I follow all the rules. So as not to pollute the community. So I have a hard time reconciling the fact that I'm expected not to pollute, but the planes are allowed to freely pollute, but in a far worse manner. If you do any research on leaded fuel, it can cause nervous neurological problems, obviously it was mentioned before, and children and memory problems. So just because we can't see it, like horse poop and dog poop, doesn't make it okay. It doesn't mean that it's not there. It's actually far worse for us. And I would expect that the council and the airport management would care about the citizens and neighbors, and I would think that this would involve not dropping toxic pollution on us and not unnecessarily ruining our peace and quiet. And I also, a couple little points, I'm just having a hard time understanding, why is the town spending so much money on something that they have no control over? Because what I keep hearing is, we can't control that, the town has no control over that, we don't, we, that's not in our jurisdiction. Well, your residents are being polluted and disturbed, and it's really hard for me to see the council just going, we have no control. It doesn't make me feel very confident. And I understand also that the airport is operating at a loss, but, you know, and people have suggested, maybe if we charge for takeoffs and landings, we can break even financially or make some money. But even if we break even, and even if we make a lot of money for the town, it doesn't make it okay to pollute our citizens. It's like having, you know, you've heard things in the news or seen movies about toxic mining in a town and the aftereffects on the people. And it's all for big business or money. I know the airport's not big business, but it doesn't make it okay, even if we make money on the airport. So maybe some unleaded fuel suggestions could be pushed a little harder. Yeah. And I think that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Ms. Willis. Ms. Vella?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think it's just worth clarifying that this is a council and a staff body that care deeply. You have an airport manager who works three days a week, that's what council resources the airport, and out of that, you have airport operations as well as public engagement that comes with that. So the attitude that we don't care, I find unfair. We care deeply, we work very long hours, and I think even just pulling meetings like this together demonstrates a lot of care. So I thought it was just worth pointing out, Your Worship. Thank you.
Thank you. And because we care, we call these meetings with all of council and all senior staff. Counsel Harrison?
Yeah, I was just gonna remind folks, too, that we did have a presentation from Sealand who's looking to go electric a few months back. This is something we're bringing to strategic planning, is looking at how we can connect essentially the type of power you need to charge the batteries, so you don't have to spend several hours charging each individual battery, which would make it impossible to operate. It's called three-phase power. Also, too, there's a federal government document on the Canada Aviation Climate Action Plan I was reading today. There's not a single mention of the word lead in it, so I was a little bit confused by that. I know I forwarded some emails we received to our MP, Mr. Johns, and I think Mr. Provost mentioned, we should reach out to Environment Canada, see what the timelines are for implementation. I think that's very reasonable, and I think that's something we should push for, but it is something where, you know, until the federal government says it's okay to do this, it's hard for us to implement it beforehand, unfortunately. But it's a fair point that we should be checking in on what the timelines are, because I know these discussions have been going on for decades. And the federal government in America has released some guidelines in like October of last year about leaded fuel for aircraft, so it's fair for us to check in, okay, well, that's what America says, standards are similar, so how are we doing in Canada? So I think that's a very helpful suggestion from Mr. Provost.
Thank you. Tyler, who's next?
We have Sigmund Sort, followed by Jaclyn Guest.
He can fly a plane, but he can't press a button on a microphone. Jeez, sorry about that. Your Worship, esteemed council members, staff, thank you very much for hosting this meeting. My name is Sigmund Sort, Qualicum Beach resident. Been a member of the Qualicum Flying Club since 1993, when I moved back to the island from being a schoolteacher in the Lower Mainland, but born and bred an island boy. What do I do now? I'm that Hope Air volunteer pilot that Stephanie Aldridge alluded to. I volunteer my time and my aircraft, and I fly people in need to their medical appointments. And some of those people aren't going to be with us very much longer. It's a real honor and a privilege to do that work and to help somebody in such dire need, whose life is going to be truncated by some awful disease, and try and make their life a little more palatable for the time they have left. I'm not the only pilot of British Columbia that does that for Hope Air, there are a lot of us. When the floods happened, I was one of a couple of pilots. Greg Howard was another club member who responded to the floods, and I flew for two months, flew 49 missions, flew people and their pets. I did that from Vancouver Island. Several club members flew with me and were ground support in that endeavor. And the Canadian Armed Forces bestowed upon me a Chief of Defense Staff commendation for doing that work and servicing my community, my province, and my country. I could not do that if I didn't get a pilot's license once upon a time. Many of the students whom I've trained in the military and in the civilian world, when I flew airlines and flew out of Qualicum Airport, all of those pilots are going to be flying something nationally, internationally, moving people for fun, moving people for business, moving people for emergency response. And they have to train somewhere. And we don't have many airports left. I recently was made Vice Chair of the Canadian Air Pilots Association Executive Council. Canadian Air Pilots Association has front seats and liaises regularly with Transport Canada, with NAV Canada, and all the regulators of aviation in Canada. We have an incredible team in Ottawa, we are an incredible source of information, and I have to commend the Town of Qualicum Beach and its staff for reaching out to the Canadian Air Pilots Association and also respecting the Supreme Court of Canada rulings that have been made clear, and have answered some of the questions that are being brought to council yet again today. And the town has bent over backwards, in my view, in consulting with pilots of all operations, whether it's emergency response, whether it's airline, whether it's school training, whether it's pleasure flying. They have worked tirelessly, year over year. And we don't always get what we want. We know that as pilots. Airlines don't get everything they want. The hobby flyer doesn't get everything they want. Hope Air doesn't get everything they want. It's the big picture, folks, and the Town of Qualicum has a real gem in having a transportation link right here. And when the forest fire blew up and closed the Port Alberni Highway, all of a sudden, the Qualicum Airport was put into play in a much bigger way to service the needs of the east and west coast of Vancouver Island. It's an important asset, and it serves not just Qualicum. Any runway can take you to anywhere in the world. So for all of you in this room that have been on an airplane or a helicopter and have gone somewhere, those pilots came from somewhere. And some of the pilots that I trained here, they're flying for the big airlines, they're flying in the military, they're flying 442 squadron. It's so easy to get little straws, fries, and think about me, 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 right here, my backyard. But I'm sorry, aviation is a national matter. It helps bind our communities. It helps bind our country, our communities. It should not be looked at as a negative. And I know people live near ferry terminals, they live near train tracks, they live near industrial centers, and some people even live near airports. And there are sound issues for all of them. But somehow aviation gets a little special bracket. I don't know what it is, it's a je ne sais quoi, but I'm not encouraging the Town of Qualicum to start charging parking fees downtown or closing the roads downtown because of the noise. I'm not asking you to turn off leaf blowers or lawn mowers. Some reason, we want to turn to aviation and try and control it. It's a gift. It's a tool. We heard from Ascent Helicopters, we heard from Hope Air. I encourage everybody in this room, and anybody watching a recording of this, to reach out to the Canadian Air Pilots Association, to reach out to Transport Canada, reach out to NAV Canada, not just the Town of Qualicum Beach. They reach out all the time. And I really respect that they're smart enough not to reinvent a wheel or not to try and prove a legal case that's already been decided and can't be overchanged. There's better time to be spent on something else than trying to go after something you're not going to be successful at. So in closing, please reach out and learn. There's a lot to know, and there's a lot to celebrate. And it's not just about the local address, folks. Thank you very much. And I commend you all for your service to Qualicum.
Qualicum Beach, but it's the same. Thank you. Just the same. Who's next, Tyla?
Mr. Mayor, council. There's a lot of passion in this room, and it's wonderful to hear it. But I'm new to Qualicum Beach. My husband and I moved here about three years ago. And since then, I have noticed an increase in the noise levels. And I don't live in Qualicum Woods. I live over by Jones. And some days, I can't imagine what it's like to live in Qualicum Woods, because the noise level where we are is noticeably louder from when we moved here to now. And I understand that pilots are amazing. We need them. But my question is, for some of these planes, I mean, they're small planes, granted, we can only have small planes at that airport. And I've been doing some reading. And I read that many small piston airplanes do in fact have mufflers. Is there no decibel level that's maximum for a community? Is there any way that these planes can be tested to see if they exceed those decibel levels? And is there any way to regulate or to make sure that these planes have the most efficient mufflers, noise suppressors? And maybe that, that's kind of a way we can work with pilots and with the community at the same time. And I don't know how it works with planes. I know a lot of planes are very old, and they keep flying. But could they not be modernized as far as noise suppression goes? I'm not sure. Maybe that's something that council could look into and see if there is a minimum or a maximum as far as sound noise, decibel levels, that are acceptable for a community and its environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Harrison.
Just as an analogy for motor vehicles, it's the provincial government with the Motor Vehicle Act, and it sets decibel thresholds for vehicles. This would probably be federal if there was regulation, but if there's existing regulation, there's no problem in saying, here are the rules, folks. Can we just double check to make sure we're following them? But I'd imagine it'd be federal. It probably wouldn't be something we'd be able to do as a town.
Okay. I think we're getting, we're gonna have quite a few more speakers. So to avoid back and forth, we want to note your concerns and your comments and advice on what we could do next to help you have a better quality of life. And that's really what we can do today. We won't have the answers amongst ourselves. We may each have some solutions in our mind, but we really need to look at all the information we're getting and then work with staff to come up with recommendations. Some will come through a motion of how to address the concerns we hear today. So let's just continue on. We are hearing some new information from people who live in different parts of town that are affected by the airport. So I'd like to give everybody who's on the speakers list a chance to express their concern. Tyla?
Next, we have John Wood and then David Cresswell.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I want to really thank Marie Noel for the information that she brought forward. She and I have had some discussions, and it's, to me, it's frustration with a capital F, there's no other way to put it, that we can't get information easily out of places like our website, our financial reports, our added statements, those sorts of things, to understand, is the airport operating in a revenue positive or a revenue negative mode? And I don't understand why it isn't very simple to do. I'm very interested that, I can't remember who it was that brought it up, the 1978 council policy on touch and goes that there be none. If it's a council policy-wise, it not being followed. A number of times, I think the CAO referred a couple of times to the public inquiry form, sorry, the public inquiry process for getting information in front of the town and council. And I'm becoming fairly adept at using it, and it's a, it's got rough edges, but it's a very good system. So I highly encourage people to use the public inquiry process that's been implemented a couple of months ago, maybe. And I'll close with a comment that there's a whole lot of Chartwell that's a whole lot closer to the airport than Qualicum Woods is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're going to get an update, a quarterly update from our airport manager. If you have any answers to some of these questions at hand, you can express them then. Who's next on the list?
David Cresswell, followed by Deb McKinley.
Mr. Cresswell? And who's next?
Deb McKinley.
Ms. McKinley. Just pull that microphone down.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, council and staff. So you heard my name is Deb McKinley, and I live, if you've been paying attention to the diagrams, go to the end of the railroad and turn left. That's where I live, just off of Rupert Road. And there are a lot of aircraft that come by. But primarily, the greatest offender, I'm sorry to say, are the helicopters. And I happen to have been one of the top contributors to Hope Air. I think they're sensational. And I also think what Ascent is doing is magnificent. I don't take it out on any of these businesses. But what I am concerned is that the town is not able to request from the government just a wee bit of help. Why wouldn't you be able to ask the government to allocate, if not a quarter, maybe a half of the training to other airports in the area? Thank you.
Thank you. Tyla?
So that concludes the list of speakers that were signed up for the airport. We did have another speakers list at the table that is related to the public safety portion. Just reviewing some of the names on that list, I know there was one here that was commenting to council regarding the airport. So I just want to offer the, want to offer the opportunity, if somebody actually signed up on the incorrect list, one of those names is Arthur Klingspoor.
So Klingspoor, were you intending to speak about the airport?
That's what I'm here for.
Okay, go ahead.
We made a bunch of questions.
Just speak to the microphone, please. Press the button. The base.
That button? Okay, cool. I'm a guy, I can't see what I'm looking at. So many of the points that I wanted to discuss have already been discussed, but some questions came up. Now, I get confused, because we've got the Airport Users Committee, we've got Town Council, some relationship between the two, and we have an Airport Authority. But they're all the same people, just different combinations, is that right? No? Who is the Airport Authority, then?
As was explained, Qualicum Beach Council is the authority about the airport. But we have a Users Committee or a Technical Committee, and then we have Management.
Okay, and Management is only three days a week? Is Mr. Goldfuss's, he's not the manager, or? He is the manager?
Yes, Mr. Goldfuss is the manager.
But only part-time?
He's there three days a week.
Wow, that's a good job. Anyway, I'm sorry, I was gonna talk about noise and such.
Let's not get make it personal, let's talk about the issue.
Okay, okay. I mean, as a taxpayer, I'm a little appalled at the amount of money that's gone into the airport when you look at who uses the airport. Now, according to the consultant's report, there were about 18,000 aircraft movements in the year that he chose to study, of which less than 800 were Squayu Air and medevac training and all the other operations. So about 5%, less than 5% was public utility, the rest was private aviation, whether it was hobby flyers or helicopters or whatever. So we just spent $8 million, basically, I mean, $4 million in grants, plus the additional money that the town has put in over the years. I'm not quite sure what it adds up to, but probably between $6 and $8 million over the last four years, to make a better playground for the wealthiest 2% of the people in our community, is what it seems like. And that's frankly, on the other hand, you've installed a lot of stuff that the corporate interests use, and the helicopter companies are probably gonna make a fair bit of money, that's why they're here. It seems to be about the only growth area in aviation, in commercial aviation right now. And I noticed they all said stuff about, well, medevac and ambulances and, you know, good things. They didn't say much about, well, resource development was mentioned just in passing, but the number one use of helicopters on the island has probably taken the growth, taken the timber out. And mining, putting crews in, that's what pays the bills for these guys, for the most part, is it not? And we're gonna facilitate that. But we're a town that believes in green. We're gonna be environmentally conscious and concerned and proactive. We want hundreds of thousands of dollars for a fleet of electric vehicles for our town, because our carbon footprint with the existing vehicles is too high. But we contribute hundreds of thousands of dollars every year to the airport, because they can't finance themselves. And the airport flies probably the most polluting vehicles on the face of the planet. These flying schools, not these flying schools, but this particular one seems to fly an old Cessna. Now, I was told that you can't put a muffler on it. You can't put pollution control devices on it, it won't take it. So, I mean, imagine like a 1968 big V8 Pontiac GTO flying in the sky. Take the muffler off, take the exhaust off, take all the pollution control devices off, and let it go. That's what you got, basically, with these old planes. And there's a lot of them, single-engine monoplanes flying overhead all the time. Now, I sort of got a couple of concerns about what's been going on. Like, we replaced these fuel tanks, right? Now, I talked with Mr. Harrison about the fuel tank, and I was looking at the minutes of the Airport Users Committee when they were discussed. Apparently, one failed testing twice and had to be replaced. And the other one became problematic. Didn't say what the problem was, but problematic, had to be replaced as well. Now, at Monday meeting with Mr. Harrison, I was told that, well, the tanks never leaked, it was a computer problem. But, I mean, these tanks are old. There really weren't that many computers around in tanks in those days. And if the computer fails, you don't dig up the tank to replace the tank. I mean, do you still think that's the problem, sir?
Please address the chair.
Okay, sorry. I mean, I just can't see that being true. Were there any leaks? When they took it up, was there any soil testing done? I mean, fuel seems to go missing, I guess not accounted for in many ways, over the, like, I don't know, it just seemed that way from looking at the papers. There was quite a bit of confusion over whose fuel and what fuel, and where did it go? Did some of it go in the ground? Did we even look for it? Is there a time bomb waiting for us there? I don't know. The second thing is the focus on lead. Well, I mean, lead is, there's all kinds of arguments about lead. None of it seems it's good, but is there enough to do us damage? They don't know. But what about greenhouse gases? I mean, if you do some research, you'll find the aviation industry is the single largest contributor of greenhouse gas per capita, not in terms of industry overall, but each, I mean, it's the worst. I mean, if you took the greenhouse gases away that the airport produces, you'd save hundreds of thousands of dollars, and you wouldn't have to replace the fleet in town. You'd be well ahead of the game. There's way more greenhouse gases created there in these old planes flying overhead than there is in our transportation, in our public work system. And another concern I have, and I hate to be run on here, but I'm a little nervous, I don't talk in public much, but the role of council and town staff in this whole thing. I mean, the people talk of trying to get answers. Well, I was the same way. I found stuff out about, like, I found $100,000 amount of fuel missing in the past year, and it was an accounting error, apparently. And I found it from the little, what do you call it, summary that was authorized to be given out at Town Hall. And I sort of looked at those papers and said, gee, how, where'd $100,000 go in 2020? I guess it was '04 or '03, I'm not sure what year it was even anymore. And Mr. Hayer, the CFO, was asked to explain it. And in the process, he said, well, we could move things from here to there, and the airport would look better, and the public's works would look worse, or whatever else. And I went, I mean, don't we even want to know what the airport actually costs us? Is what I sort of found from that.
Just a moment, Ms. Reynolds?
Your Worship, I'm uncomfortable with the commentary. Staff, just sit here and listen to us with no ability to respond, and I don't think it serves the community or council or the public who are in attendance well. If council wants a robust accounting on the airport, I would suggest that you request it at the July 17 meeting. But the commentary that staff can't respond to, I find unfair.
I agree. We will ask for detailed reporting on the airport costs. Does that, would answer your concern?
Well, I'm not sure. I requested a capital structure outline as to capital contributions that weren't available six months ago. I got an email saying it was important, and they get back to me, but there was an audit going on that was in March. And that's the last I've heard. So that's, that's fine. I mean, I'm just, you don't really have to worry about me too much, this is probably my last kick at the cat here, because I don't want to fight City Hall. And I hope you guys haven't got your mind made up already, I fear you might have. But I think you're going to have to decide.
I think I'm gonna stop you there. To tell us that we've made up our minds is unfair, so I ask you to withdraw from this front of the microphone speaker.
Okay, so.
Please take a seat, you are done.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Who's next on the list?
To confirm, we don't have any more speakers registered for the airport portion.
Oh, there was, I think there were some people perhaps on the wrong list. Yes.
Thank you, Jason.
Just one thing, if I may. So prior to doing council, I worked in insurance. Any oil tanks, if you have oil heat for your home, and you have an oil tank in your backyard, it's in the ground, you have to replace them periodically, otherwise they will fail. And you have to do the soil remediation with all the gas and oil, and it is very, very expensive to do soil remediation. We don't want gas and oil in the ground at our airport. So it wasn't failing, but it was getting close to that. It was close to the end of life cycle anyways. So to the point made about the avgas replacement, it was something that we had to do, even if the technical malfunctions weren't there. We needed to do it in the very near future.
So who was, I'm sorry, I forgot the name.
I didn't issue it yet. So we have Brandon, I don't have a last name, Gord, and then Dave Chatters.
Hi, so my name's Brendan, and last name Smith hyphen Achoo. I'm a resident of Parksville. I'm one of the young aviators in this community, along with another gentleman right behind me. And we're here kind of to speak up and to express our gratitude to council and the citizens of Qualicum Beach and surrounding. and the citizens of Qualcomm Beach and surrounding area for, one, investing in the infrastructure that we utilize daily as we work to obtain the certifications, qualifications needed for a future career working in aviation. Personally, I'm working towards my commercial pilot license as it stands. The gentleman behind me has his recreational pilot's license, because he's too young to have his private pilot license, and after he meets the requirement for 17 years of age for that, he'll then work towards getting his commercial pilot's license. That's our expressed interest in kind of why we use the airport. Some of the things that I'd like to talk about that were mentioned, and I'm just gonna reference my notes very briefly. Some people had mentioned that an aircraft will make multiple circuits within an hour, in excess of nine to approximately 10. For the aircraft that we utilize when we rent through Sealand Flight and other organizations at the airport, typically, we're looking at a circuit every six minutes. So, I don't really know who is able to do that many circuits in an hour, but it's probably not somebody renting the aircraft that are commonly used through the airport. I hear the corrections to my math. This is also not taking into account other aircraft that are in the circuit, which typically, there are a lot of aircraft in the circuit, because when we do training, it's a nice sunny day, and there's quite a few other aircraft in that circuit with us, so we have to create spacing to allow for that. The six-minute circuit figure that I use is if I was by myself, which is very rare. Secondly, I'd also like to highlight the fees associated with an aircraft operator at the airport. Sealand, I'm a member of Qualcomm Beach Flying Club. Sealand rents space through the Qualcomm Beach Flying Club on a monthly, and to my understanding, while I do not represent them, they also pay tie-down fees for every one of the aircraft that they have at the airport. I don't know what those numbers are, I can't make comment on that, and I will not try to make comment on that. As it relates to unleaded aviation and fuel alternatives, yes, there are some in existence currently, but also, not every aircraft is able to use it. And that's something that's not within the control of this municipality or this province. And while it is, to an extent, within the control of the federal government, it's probably not something that we're going to see for a considerable amount of time, although I think I can speak for the majority of people when I say that that is something that we would like to see. Sorry, I'm trying not to take up too much of your time. I'd also like to highlight the point, because we're one of the very few airports on the island, we're also a very large portion of the island's overall aviation industry, seeing as there was a flight school in Nanaimo that is now closed. So Qualcomm Beach is one of the closest airports that has flight training capabilities, as well as aircraft and an operator that can service an area from Duncan all the way up to roughly Bowser. Otherwise, people are gonna have to go all the way down to Victoria to do flight training, or up to Campbell River, so there's, the amount of options are running out. So that's why there is an increase in activity. And I know that Sealand Aviation, through existing and being at the airport, they've been quite swamped with a lot of the people that came up from Nanaimo who were doing their flight training. So that's why there is an increase. And finally, the general remarks that a lot of the pilots here are very wealthy, they're doing this for fun. I'm not that 2%. I don't make a whole lot of money, as is. I just kind of scrape by, and I take all of my money, and I throw it into aviation to work towards paying for my education and my future. And I know there is a lot of other people here that are not represented well enough in this room, because they were either busy working, or doing other things, and had other commitments, so they couldn't come here today to speak. But believe me when I say that there is a lot of people in my age range, as well as the gentleman behind me, his age range, who do actively work towards getting their commercial pilot's license, or any other training, that actively utilizes the facility here. So, thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it, everyone.
Thank you.
So I did have a Gord after Brandon, is that yourself? And you neglected to include your last name.
I also don't know how to work the button. Your worship, councilors, my name is Gord Govan, I'm the owner of Skydive Vancouver Island. I've spoken to some of you at several different occasions. And, yeah, so I just wrote some notes from various things that people talked about today, so I thought I could provide maybe some clarity to help answer some questions, possibly. So I'm just gonna kind of jump all over the map. But first, I'd like to say thank you very much for approving our operation. We're now into our 10th year of operations, can you believe that time goes by that fast? So, we're not at the Qualcomm Beach Airport, skydiving there anymore, but we're out in Innuce Bay, and we're having a great time out there. So, some people asked about fees at the airport, and the airport does charge a fee for takeoff and landing. And you can go into the bylaws, and you can find that, it has the fees for that, as well as tie-down fees, and if you lease space at the airport, there's, all the fees are in there. So, I don't think anybody has to worry about council not putting their hand out for enough money, because I feel like I give lots of money to the town, so. So, everybody's onside that way. Also, the town does mark up the price of fuel according to its bylaw, and I believe it's 20%. So, the town does get revenue from that. So, when the lady from Ascent Helicopters says, you know, "We spend $1.2 million in fuel," that she buys Jet A right now, then 20% of that would have been revenue back to the town if Ascent was still operating at the airport. So that's something to sort of keep track of. It's a bit of a conundrum, because I hear some of the arguments are that the airport doesn't make money. And then other arguments is that the airport is too busy. But in actuality, the airport is underutilized, and if it was busier, it would make more money. So by businesses like Ascent and ourselves not being at the airport anymore, it means that there's less revenue to the airport, which would make it more self-sufficient. I don't know the exact numbers about how, what money it makes or doesn't, either, so. I do applaud the town and the management, I know we're not supposed to talk about specific people, but Kevin over there, the airport manager, is doing an awesome job, and it's great to have him on board. We haven't had a dedicated airport manager until just this last year and a bit. So it used to be, you know, the town engineer or somebody else had a part-time job where he had to wear the airport manager hat. And, you know, if it was 3% of his income for the whole thing, he probably said, "Well, I can dedicate four hours a week to be able to do this." So the fact that Kevin is there for three days a week means that things are moving forward in a very positive way. I think it's probably more effective communication to council, more effective communication to all the operators at the airport, and I think we're able to move forward in a much stronger way. Things like the Good Neighbor Program, which I'm glad to be a part of. If anybody here would like to find out more information about our operation, or how things work at the airport, we're there, come and go on a daily basis, and I'd be very happy to help with anybody with that. Some people asked about regulations that govern airports, and why council can't do as much as people like them to do. Well, it comes down, actually, to the separation of powers that's awarded in the British North America Act. So that's back to, you know, the basic constitution of Canada. And so, we're not, you're not always fighting the right person when you're fighting council, other than, I guess, to act on your behalf to petition the federal government. But they don't have a lot of control, more than a centimeter above the ground of the airport, so. I, as an operator, we use a lot of fuel. I think we spent $100,000 on fuel last year. And I agree, I hate that it's leaded fuel, but at the same time, it hasn't been approved. There isn't unleaded fuel that's been approved for our aircraft. Certified aircraft have very specific regulations about what they're allowed to use, and how they're allowed to use it. And I can't just willy-nilly change something, like, I can't be like my car, and I go from, you know, regular to supreme, or whatever, on that drop of a hat. I have to use the specific oil that the manufacturer recommends, I have to use the specific fuel, and everything is regulated that way. So, if you're that worried about it, I applaud the person that said, "Let's petition the federal government, the environment," or whatever it was, because they're the guys that can maybe help move Transport Canada forward, who's working in conjunction with the FAA. And we all know how fast large governments like that, how fast they move, so it's a process. It also comes down to, the lady who was just up a couple minutes ago was asking about changing mufflers on planes. And it's, again, it's highly regulated, and I can't just put any type of muffler, any type of part, or anything on my plane. They all have to be approved for certified aircraft, and for that specific aircraft. So something that might work on one plane does not necessarily work on another. So it's a big process, and some things are very limited for what you're allowed to use on different aircraft. The, Sealand is blamed a lot for the touch-and-goes, and I think Brandon, who's one of our fine young pilots at the Qualcomm Beach Airport, who, incidentally, if you get a chance, on the town website, there's a video that talks about approaching and flying in and out of the airport, it's on the airport webpage. And he's the guy that voiced it, volunteered his time, and did that. I just applaud that, I think it's absolutely great, him and Tony did that together. But Sealand is blamed for a lot of the touch-and-goes, and in reality, I think they probably only represent maybe 10 to 20% of them. There's, we attract a lot of pilots who are doing their cross-country training, it's part of the training to get their private pilot's license. So they come from Boundary Bay, where there's like 10 flight schools, and they come from Pitt Meadows, and they come from Victoria, and they come from all over the place, because they have to do a cross-country flight, and this is a great place to stop in at, so. And as they come in, they'll do a couple of touch-and-goes, and then they'll continue on up to Campbell River, or to Comox, or something like that. So, I think it's bad to say, "Hey, it's only the flight schools, and they're the guys that are doing it all the time." Because just like the commercial helicopter pilots who have to do their retraining every single year, private pilots and other commercial pilots, they have to do retraining as well. And so, touch-and-goes are sometimes part of that, in order to keep a certain rating alive, or something like that. Sorry, I'm going on a little bit here. And the reason why I can sort of attest to Sealand and the amount of touch-and-goes they do, part of our operations is that we have a ground radio where we listen to all the air traffic in the area all day, all day long, every day. That's my job. And so, I know local pilots, and I know the call letters of the different planes that, say, Sealand owns, or other people, and I know a lot of these pilots by their first name. And so I can attest to the volume that Sealand is doing, or somebody else to that effect. Also, I'd like to say that, although I'm not associated with Sealand in any way, but they're a great corporate citizen throughout Vancouver Island, they're in Campbell River, as well as here in Powell River. And today, I actually ran into a pilot that was trained by them, I believe, three years ago. He worked for me two years ago, so we hired commercial pilots, we're often, they're one of their first jobs. He worked for us for a season, worked in Calgary for a season, and now, today, he's with Encore Airlines, so, a WestJet affiliate. So, I think it's wonderful that we create an opportunity for people to develop their careers and move forward in a positive way. And, yeah, that's all I really have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just one question maybe for the speaker, just because he's, forgive me, like, much more knowledgeable than I am. It sounds to me like a lot of the concerns are folks responding to traffic going off runway 29, as opposed to runway 11. Is there a way you could shift some of the 29 traffic to 11?
Yeah, and actually, the airport manager asked me that earlier this year, because we do a lot of takeoff and landings. The trick is, or the crux of it all, is that the wind blows down the island most of the summer. And so, we take off into the wind, we'll have a more effective takeoff. I wish we could take off the other way, although the residents who live over that way probably wouldn't be as happy either, but we ultimately have to fly over top of somebody. But we have to take off into the wind. Now, I should actually apologize, because one of my new pilots that's been working for me for the last month, the other day, I found out through the deputy airport manager, goes, "Hey, I think one of your guys was taking off straight rather than turning south," and he's been flying for, like I said, for like a month. And I confirmed with him that he had been, and it's legal to fly straight out, but he wasn't doing the courteous thing of turning south. And so I since spoke to him the other day, so, maybe he was that recording, I'm not sure, but. But, so at least, you know, there's a step in the right direction. I wholeheartedly want people to know that we wanna be good corporate citizens. That's how we're trying to grow our business, that's how Sealand's trying to grow their business as well. And, you know, things that we can do to make things better, a lot of it is education, I think, and a lot of it is misunderstanding. And so that's why I make myself or my wife Allison available. If anybody has any questions about, you know, how planes work, or why they work a certain way, or how they do things a certain way, by all means, reach out to us. You can find us online at skydivevancouvereisland.com. And we're happy to answer any questions, anytime, all the time, so, yeah.
Thank you. Perhaps this, go ahead, no, you finished.
No, that's all I have, thank you.
Perhaps at this time, and I'm looking at the time, it would be good if we could ask our manager to present the quarterly report. And then, if there's still some questions, we can look at that, but we need to keep an eye on the time, because we also have to go to some other elements on the agenda, pardon? One more speaker? All right. One more speaker, who is the name of the speaker?
Dave Chatters.
Dave Chatters? Go ahead, Dave.
I've watched everybody do that. We all have to be reminded. And it's because of our age, I guess. I could say it was aviation. I want to tell you, Mr. Mayor and council, that you're doing a job that I don't wanna do. I wouldn't be able to handle all of the complaints you got. But I want to remind you of something that's very important, that we are a town of maybe 9,500 people. And there's only a small amount of us in this room. We don't really represent everybody of this town. This town is very happy with the way the town is. We're very happy with the parking, we're very happy with the parks, we're very happy with most things here. And so we don't complain. So, I want you to, when you've finished your day here, think that was a rough day, but it doesn't represent all of the town. We are happy, and I'm a pilot, and one of the things I'm happy with is our location and our airport. And I will tell you that most of the pilots there really do make an attempt to make it quiet. We have quite a number of visitors in the summer, and in a kind of answer to Council Harrison is, in the summertime, the wind generally blows from that direction, and God says, "Take off into the wind," so we take off runway 29. In the wintertime, we would take off in the other direction most of the time, but most of us aren't flying, and most of the folks here aren't outside in their gardens. So, that's why we get a lot of complaints. I don't think I wanna go much further than this, because Gord covered a great many things, but I just, I just want you to remember that you're doing a good job for us, and many of us appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, with that, if I could ask Mr. Goldfuss to prepare his quarterly report, to present his quarterly report.
Thank you, your worship. I'm happy to present to council this evening the quarterly report for the airport. I think it's important to note as well that this report is the first and second quarter report for this year, and also, it's important to note that the cutoff for data collection was June the 15th, to be able to prepare for the report. So, it's been busy. It's been a really busy, productive first two quarters. We've been working on the new tracking system, and it's proven to be a good tool. And what it's proven is, is that, well, we can see it tonight, it's part of this discussion. So, with that, we've had, we've had, in the two quarters, we've had 105 public inquiries. And out of those 105 public inquiries, we've had four violations, okay? So two of those violations were noise abatement procedure violations, and the Airport Authority has acted on those. The other two were curfew violations, and again, the Airport Authority acted on those as well. So out of the 105, there was four violations. So, what that tells us is, the 101 remaining, they're noise, complaints about noise. There's complaints about, or concerns, if you will, about leaded fuel, helicopter training, and what have you. So I wanted to share that as well. But getting back to some of the successes with airport improvements, Tetra Tech Engineering has completed and submitted an application through the ACAP program, which I want to add is 100% funded through the federal government ACAP program. And that was an application for a runway, taxiway, and apron overlay, pavement overlay. And that work has come in at approximately $3.5 million. So that application was submitted June the 1st, as a requirement of Transport Canada and the ACAP program. ACAP program. The second application under the ACAP program that staff put in was for the replacement of a loader and snow blower and attachments. That application is approximately $860,000. And again, it is 100% funded, but through the ACAP program. So if the town is successful, we will hear in March, April of next year, 2025, on the two applications. And one thing that's important to note, if we aren't successful, we don't have to reply. What the ACAP program does is they keep it in the hopper, so to speak, and it goes over to the next year. And they'll keep doing that until we do become successful in those applications. We've touched tonight on the Good Neighbor Program. That was another success, we think, and we're excited to be rolling that out. And as mentioned, it will be going on the town's website after tonight's meeting. So is there any questions?
Counsel, any questions to our manager? Counsel Harrison?
I just think it'd be reasonable to follow up, maybe as a recommendation to Council, that we draft a letter to Environment Canada to accelerate the process to shift away from leaded fuel.
Okay. So if we have a move, has been, the report has been moved and seconded. We can vote on that. And then if you want to make a motion to deal with separate issues on the zone, I think probably for clarity, better way to go. Ms. Coates?
Just for clarity, we already have a recommendation on the next council agenda on that topic. And sorry, I missed the mover and seconder for the receipt of the report.
That was, I think, Counsel Skipsey and Counsel Vandervall. Yeah. All right. So are you ready to vote on the question? Counsel Skipsey?
Well, I just had one question, and just looking at the numbers. So in November 2023, it was stated that the town had received 46 complaints for 2023. And we're now halfway through 2024, and there have been 105. So that's quite an increase. And I just wondered if staff had any thoughts or explanations. And then, again, about the helicopter training in 2023, there were approximately 29 hours of training. And so far, we're halfway through the year, and there's been over 60 hours of training. So again, this appears to be quite an increase. And I just wondered, again, if staff have any comments or information.
Ms. Rella?
Thank you, Your Worship. With your permission, I'll let the manager of the airport take the helicopter piece, but I will take the volume of concerns. One of the things I would like to point out to the public is we have noise complaints, and those are related to specific planes and the noise abatement procedures. So those are actionable by staff. The other categories we've identified as noise concerns, because they're general and there's nothing we can look to for enforcement. So I thought that was worth pointing out. I think, again, the increase in numbers is likely related to the public having a very clear platform now. So in the last two years, Council has invested a lot of resource, staff time, and dollars to both bring forward a consultation plan, to engage a consultant. We've moved to an inquiry system. So we've seen a lot more profile on the airport. I think when I first arrived here, I know I spoke with some key members of the public who really found it difficult to even express their concerns. And I think this is a commitment now to making sure the public has that opportunity, because we really do want to hear both the positive, negative, and neutral comments about the airport, so that you, as decision-makers, have the best information you can. So that's what I would attribute it to. But again, that is somewhat anecdotal.
Thank you. And Mr. Golphus?
Thank you, Your Worship. To answer the question on helicopter training, that is correct. There has been an increase over last year. Just looking at it, some of that is with respect to night vision training, ascent helicopters. There's new technology out there that they have been implemented and have been training, and that took part this year as well. Primarily, that night vision is used for wildfire fighting, medevacs, different things like that. So that's one aspect of it. But you are correct, there has been an increase of approximately 60 hours for this year.
So Counsel, if we vote on this and we accept this, that doesn't mean the end of what we've heard tonight. But we need time to formulate the appropriate wording for motions for staff to act on. So we have a lot of information. I personally took many notes. I'm sure others took copious notes as well. And what we'll do on your behalf is to draft motions that staff can work with to address some of the concerns we heard about tonight. So with that, if I could ask Counsel, are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed, if any? Carry. Thank you. I also would ask for a motion to have a five-minute recess before we get into the traffic and other issues about safety. Are you okay with that? Counsel Vandervall, Counsel Harrison, all in favor? Yes?
I was just thinking too, that just before we finish with the airport altogether, so we're going to be doing a quality of life survey in the near future. There is some information, the old quality of life survey about the airport, but without loading things now, it might be useful to think, as we do the quality of life survey in the future, we might want to have some questions about the airport in there without getting specific as to what they are. I don't want to weigh in how it should be worded or anything like that. That's not the point. But just something I just wanted to flag with staff before we close off the airport altogether, that it might be good to have a few questions specific to the airport as we do our quality of life survey in about a year's time.
Yes, I'm sure there'll be some questions, and not loaded questions, but fair questions with good information. Thank you. So ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed, if any? We have a five-minute recess. Thank you. I'll call the meeting back to order. And at this time, we'll have a presentation by the Director of Infrastructure Services, Mr. Rob Dickinson. Do you have the floor? Oh, before we do, just in case we go beyond three hours, can I have a motion to go beyond three hours? Counsel Skipsey, Counsel Harrison, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just have a quick, I think it's six-slide PowerPoint here, just to kind of preamble for us, to guide some of the discussion perhaps. The purpose of this public discussion or forum is related to the dissolution of the public safety accessibility and emergency preparedness that Council wished to provide the public with an opportunity to directly address Council. So this gives an opportunity for Council to be sitting as a committee the whole, and for the public to come and raise any concerns that they had. So it's, we're anticipating it would be a more thorough and more efficient way for people to bring these issues forward, and for us to hear them and then address The Select Committee on Public Safety Accessibility and Emergency Preparedness. Council dissolved the Select Committee on Public Safety Accessibility Emergency Preparedness in May 2024 based on four points. The committee review report recommended dissolution. The transportation-related concerns now go to a community transportation plan, which is updated annually. The last one was January 2024, just recently, so the next one will be September 2025. But we are always hearing and addressing any concerns that people bring forward. We bring those to our transportation engineer, as well as if it's an urgent matter, then we address those urgently. Otherwise, then we incorporate them through our inquiry system, so that no correspondence is lost. And then we give it to our transportation engineer, so it's incorporated in the next update. So all that correspondence from the year is then addressed. The third point is accessibility-related concerns now go to the accessibility advisory team. And the last point is the emergency preparedness now has a new provincial legislation. Concerns about safety related to the following specific categories have separate forums and processes. So this is just to help folks for different processes with the dissolution of that committee. If you have any concerns, this is where you can go. So urgent matters, hopefully, people are calling 911, and not just the 1-250 number to the RCMP. If it is urgent, call 911, please, because we do get that at the fire hall sometimes, where people will call the general number instead of 911. Non-emergency calls to the RCMP likewise. If it is non-urgent and you need to talk to a constable or someone, then please call that number up there. And then traffic-related concerns are the community transportation plan reviews. Please contact the town through our inquiry system, which I'll talk about on the next slide, as well as give a brief update on our community transportation plan at the end of this. And then the airport public discussion forum, or contact the town, as we have just heard in our previous presentations. Accessibility, please contact the town. Council may refer to the accessibility advisory team more appropriate, as is their place. And other safety concerns, again, just please contact the town. And our inquiry system will ensure that your correspondence, your concerns, or what you bring forward will not be lost and will be addressed by staff. The town inquiry system. So just this year, we've started a soft launch. And what this is, is we've spoken to a little bit earlier in the list. You read the slide as I speak of a system. So instead of having things in our inbox in our email, or having different systems of trying to track and make sure we don't lose correspondence, we now have one comprehensive system, which is wonderful. So it's always in there, it's never lost, and it also is there to remind us, if it's addressed to me, it also helps address it to the right person. But if it's addressed to me or another person on staff, then it will remind us. We will know that we haven't addressed that concern. If a date goes by and we haven't addressed it, then we will be reminded, which is wonderful. So if there's people out there who feel they haven't been addressed in a timely manner, this will help And now with this last slide is just thanking everyone for attending this public discussion forum. We are opening up for all safety matters. But before we do that, I just briefly want to give a quick review of where we are with the community transportation plan, as I suspect that many issues the community transportation plan, as I suspect that many issues may be related to that. So our community transportation plan was updated in January of this year. It started last summer with input ongoing through the fall in many forums, be it people phoning in, people emailing, people coming into the counter. And we incorporated all of that into our updates. And we had committee, the whole meetings with council to talk and have people be able to address their concerns to council directly. And then we had the, the plan actually endorsed by council in January of this year. So this year, as part of that plan, what we have done and are going to do is we have installed a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, as engineers like to call them, RRFBs, at Laburnum and Claymore. And this is an upgrade from the previous flasher that was there, which was a round fixture. So these lights are far more visible and more effective when advising a, a person in a vehicle if someone is, is intending or is crossing the road. And later this year, we have ordered more RRFBs for other locations, and they are to be installed, and that's at Bennett Road and Sunrise, as well as a solar light, street light, to improve visibility of people crossing that crossing. A new RFB at Jones and Fern, also including a solar street light. And we are just having design, and we're going to put an RFB in a new pedestrian, raised pedestrian crossing at First and Rye, which in that instance, because it's not an arterial road, we can put a vertical measure to help reduce the speeds, as well as it raises the people walking across the road, so they're more visible, especially for smaller people. And lastly, we have a 19A ditch infill. We did phase one in the previous year, just recently, and finished it this year, where we're putting in bike and ped lane next to parking on the far side from the waterfront, where we're putting in designated safe parking. And so we've put in quite a few stalls in the previous phase, and this is going to finish that in the far east and west end of the waterfront. And we are just waiting for approval from archaeological permits before we tender it. We're hoping to get it built this year, but with paving and the archaeological permit, it may not be constructed or finished until next spring, when we can pave it. Lastly, I'd like to say, through the years 2025 and through 2028, if you go through our financial plan on page 113, you'll see where we talk about the fiber optic cable that we're putting in, in the water, for the water system. And at the same time, we will be building a trail along Hemlock. As well as page 125, or the transportation, Hemsworth, sorry. As well as page 125, the transportation goes through all four, all five years of what we'll be constructing in the future in detail. And in page 128, we talk about the trails that we will be improving, extending, and reconstructing where necessary. And that is just a brief summary of where we're at right now. We are receiving quite a few correspondence ongoing, as we have in, in the past, and we incorporate that. We send it usually either weekly or monthly, depending on how many we get, to our transportation engineer for review, for immediate discussion. If it's anything that comes in that is urgent, then we just call our transportation engineer and talk about it at that time. So we, we are basically incorporating all of this in a system that we have, the inquiry system. And then when we update it, starting in 2025 for adoption next September by council again, we will go through that same process, bringing all this correspondence to council, revisiting our priority system of all the projects that we have to date, adding any new ones, and continuing to dialogue with the public and council on, on how we prioritize those projects. And that's my update.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilor Young?
Hi. Can you possibly provide us an update on if we're going to have angle parking at some point in the downtown area? It's been brought up every year. Also, the other thing is the crossing on Memorial towards the farmer's market there. That is such a busy intersection corner there, and there's never been anything in a way of a controlled crossing.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. The, the parallel parking downtown, or sorry, the angle parking is, is an ongoing concept. What we're looking at is we continue to revitalize our downtown, where it may or may not be appropriate. There's sightline concerns, as well as speeding, where you can create some very unsafe conditions. So it's definitely on our radar as we look at our streetscapes as we continue to, to revitalize our downtown. So I don't have any specific locations or, or comments on that, but it's definitely one of the tools in our toolbox to consider to improve parking downtown. And then second is that crossing, that railway. So with recent findings in the courts and, and some, almost some direction from the province and feds on what they're going to do with the railway, we're still waiting for some direction on what is going to happen with that, because we're looking at significant, like hundreds of thousands of dollars or more cost if that railway is going to be active or until it's inactive. We would have to upgrade the lighting. There's setbacks requirements that have significant delays as you slow people far enough away from the tracks, even when there aren't trains running there. So to not utilize taxpayers' money and then find out it's going to be inactive, we're holding off any improvements there until we have some direction from what's going to happen with that railway.
Okay. Councilor Harrison?
Just also too, for the public, and something when we did the little bus garage parking update, there was a line on Second Avenue becoming one-way in that report. It was about 30 pages in, and it was not front and center, but it was there. And they did, basically, the consultant didn't recommend it at that time. But just if folks want to go back through some of our previous council meetings, you can see the report. And I know we've been reaching on the past, the last I heard about the railway, I forget if it was the province or the feds, but they're starting yet another round of consultation for potential uses, which is, forgive me if I sound a little bit cynical, but it sounds like you're kicking the can down the road, as opposed to making a, a decision on that one. So it's a bit unfortunate, because regardless of the decision, I don't want to say what the federal or provincial government should or shouldn't do, but there is no connection north of Nanaimo now, because the Nanuas Nation has received their land back already. So that link is broken now. So unless they're going to buy some land, I really don't know why they're not letting us get some clarity. But here we are, and this is what it is. But yeah, just especially for the angle parking thing, I thought that was a very interesting line buried in a report four months ago that we didn't talk about much. But I know some citizens of the community are very passionate about that, and they might be very interested to read the consultant's findings when we did the traffic volume study for the bus garage property. It is included in that report.
Yeah, there was a thought that would be, would make Second Avenue one-way, and then have parking, angle parking, which would create a significant number of parking spots. The other area is behind the old fire hall. Basically, where the barricades are all the way, almost up to the, to Beach Road. You could, I'm not sure, I think Mr. Sales measured it, but it is a significant number, probably a bigger number than the number of cars that could park on the parking lot that was at the old Second Avenue site, the old Village place. So I forget, did you, you had a number in mind of how many spots, and, and when can you think we could create those?
Thank you, Mayor Westbrook. So the area I believe you're referring to is behind the old fire hall on the extension of Harlock Road. Even with the parallel parking that exists there now, there's, there's likely on the order of over 100 stalls that, that is accessible to the public. So one of the initiatives that staff is undertaking this summer is just introducing some signage so that people know there's additional parking with an arrow towards, towards Harlock Road. So we're, we're helping them direct in that direction. If it were to be reconfigured for angled parking, then it would be hundreds more stalls, but it depends on exactly how it's done. So that requires more investigation. The, the low-hanging fruit is just to direct people there in the first place, because it's a significant addition to the downtown parking. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Councilor Harrison?
And just to clarify, my apologies, I'm so used to the QB Town email. There's some citizens I met on Canada Day who had some traffic ideas, and I suggested they submit that to the QB Town email. But now, as a diligent councillor moving forward, I think I should be using the inquiry at qualicumbeach.com instead of QB Town. I'm getting nods from staff, so just mental note, my apologies for getting the wrong emails, like five years, force of habit, and, but the inquiry system works pretty well, so I'm glad to see it's moving forward.
Thank you. Now, it's up to the public. If any comments, questions, we'll take them now. So who would like to go first? Is there a list? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so Ron Gerard, and then followed by Todd Provost.
There you are. And we got to push the button again for the microphone. Yep.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Councilor Young for teeing me off, for the presentation regarding our downtown core.
I think you meant teeing you up. Teeing off would be different.
Yeah, teeing me up, I meant to say. Honorable mayor, councillors, and committee as a whole, I'm going to stick to my script today. My name is Ron Gerard, and I'm a resident of Qualicum Beach here, at the Gables on Railway Street. And other residents here are with me, present here today, as we, and we represent the Gables and Railway Street as residents of the Downtown Core. And based on the response that I received on Monday, when attending the open house discussion with councillors, we may, that may also include other residents of the Downtown Core, Eagle Crest, and Chartwell. My topic for discussion, soliciting a requested response, is specifically related to the speed limit set for track, traffic coming up Memorial Avenue, and the resulting congestion at the convergence of Memorial Avenue and First Street, which includes the traffic intersecting from the east at Village Way and the entry into Railway Street. Residents individually and collectively have raised this safety concern to town administration, city planner Luke Sales, by law enforcement, and some individual council members. We understand that there is a service level review in progress with no set deadline for completion, and that the current community transportation plan will be reviewed this fall. We look forward to the potential for residents to participate and have input to this service level review, and the draft revision of the transport, transportation plan, as they both unfold prior to the completion and before being finalized. However, for the purpose of today's discussion, we request your immediate action for additional signage to be added to slow down local and tourist traffic coming up Memorial Avenue. The current posted signage for all of Memorial Avenue from, from all, for all of Memorial Avenue, from the base at Oceanside to the top of the hill at the entry to the Downtown Core, only occurs one, one time. This one sign, reading 50 kilometers per hour, is posted at the Shell Station, and as motorists come into the roundabout, they accelerate into and through the 50 kilometer per hour sign, with the invitation to speed up, with many motorists exceeding 60 kilometers per hour. And as they come to the flat of the intersection, to the golf course crosswalk, they may pause if they see golfers. But if they don't, they'll continue to accelerate up the hill into residence, into the residential area, until they meet an aggressive, nearly blind corner, with traffic intersecting from the east of the Village Way, as well as traffic entering from the west out of Railway Street, with some motorists even trying to turn left onto Memorial Avenue. To further compound the danger, there's a bus stop on the corner to the left by the curling rink, where there are pedestrians standing. On Saturday morning, traffic is further compounded when motorists and many pedestrians are crossing the street, where there's no crosswalk to attend the farmer's market. All the traffic being mentioned above drives, drives over the railway tracks into the intersection of the Downtown Core, where it immediately meets the traffic coming fast from the west in front of the Berwick on First Street to the busy gas station on the corner. And it includes motorcycles. The entirety of all of this traffic drives directly into the bottleneck and multiple pedestrian crosswalks that have been noted, to meet many of the following. And here's who they meet. Tourists not knowing the area. Older citizens moving cautiously, some with walkers. Schoolchildren, runners, and people on bikes. Pedestrians with dogs. Motorists trying to leave the gas station. People coming to and leaving the bus stop. Customers moving to and from the farmer's market. Residents from other areas of Qualicum Beach coming in to shop locally. Newcomers, residents to Qualicum Beach. And as of yesterday's monthly newcomer meeting, there were up to 400 for the year. And the day that we attended the meeting, there were 13 newcomers. That was yesterday. The list now includes 17 new residents of the Gable on Railway Street, many of them here today. In the future, this list will include 56 new residents that will be moving into the Qantas Building on Village Way next to us. It will also include new residents that will occupy the East Village Building, currently under construction, which is made up of 14 commercial units and 15 residential occupants that will be joining our community, community in 2025. I'm going to take a pause there. It is glaringly obvious that the safety of all Qualicum Beach residents is at risk, and that a major accident is going to occur, and someone is going to be seriously hurt, or heaven forbid, even killed, if something is not done immediately. We request that you take immediate action to put up flashing signage coming up Memorial Avenue to slow down traffic, with permanent speed reduction signage to go up on Memorial Avenue in the very near future. We also request, request that you close off Railway Street to any market traffic on Saturday from 6:00 AM to, 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and this will immediately impact an already high-risk area in the short term. Now, we stayed here and listened for two hours, two and a half hours about noise in the air, but there's also boots on the ground, and a lot of community members, residents, are at risk, serious risk. So, all kidding aside, I know we were joking at the beginning, but this is a serious matter, and if something's not done, and city planner Sales, you and I have discussed this, and I've met with a couple of councillors a couple of times on this. And on Monday, Councilor Skipsey said, bring it here tonight. And word, your words were, we will take, you can take as long as you want, were your words. I took, I timed it, but I timed it. I timed it based on what just happened. I said I would take five, seven minutes is what I've taken right now. But I'm not leaving right here until I hear a little bit of discussion and get your response. Listening a few minutes ago also to what was said about, you know, the, the whole railway issue and what, what can be done. I know we're working on other things as well. I brought up bylaw officers, why we don't have safety enforcement officers assigned. I've had really good discussions with, with Don, with Don Marshall, your bylaw officer, even made some suggestions to Mr. Sales regarding getting an additional bylaw officer, which I also brought up in another meeting. And they, I was told that would, that would involve a 1% increase in taxes, yet I see other things going on, which we won't get into right now. But I do want to hear from you, because if something happens, who's liable? If something happens and we see something seriously happen, what are we going to do about it? So I know I'm looking at you first, Mr. Mayor, so I'd, I'd really like to hear what you have to say about the many years that you've been here on what I'm presenting.
Well, I've been here for 28 years, and almost everywhere in town, I've been told somebody's going to get killed unless we do something. We can't prevent stupidity. When people are speeding, then there's not much anybody can prevent to stop that from hurting somebody or killing somebody. What we can do, now you can shake your head all you want, I don't have the power over people to say, slow down. So first of all, I'd like you to take a seat, and we'll talk about it as a council, because now it's a council matter. So thank you.
All right. I just, it's unfortunate.
Please take a seat, and then we can discuss it amongst council and staff, because none of us make decisions on our own. These are all council decisions that have to be affected. These are all council decisions that have to be affected by staff. So to point to one member of council, me or somebody else, is not reasonable. I want to hear from staff, I want to hear from council, what they think we should do about these traffic issues. And as I said, I've heard them for many years. We've heard from residents in Eagle Crest that we have to put in a roundabout, and it is in the work, it's in a plan, has been on a plan for quite some time, to put in a roundabout at Village Way and the Island Highway. But on this issue of speed, the fallback speed in the whole town is 50 kilometers. Now, we've had from time to time reduce the speed to 40, which I think is more appropriate for the entire waterfront area, Island Highway. There was a motion made, I don't remember who voted against it, but the majority was against it, to slow the speed down on the Island Highway by the beach to 40. And when there was construction happening on Memorial, we had it slowed down to 40 as well. So there has to be enforcement. Without enforcement, it means nothing. So we have to work together, not as me, the mayor, or anyone on council. This is a community effort. This will be an effort between all of council saying, "This is the direction we want to go," and work with staff and the RCMP to make sure that it's not just a sign, because people can ignore signs. There has to be some enforcement. So with that, I'd like to ask members of council if they have any thoughts on this or how we might move forward, or whether we draft for a future council meeting an notice of motion to deal with this concern. Councillor Harrison?
Yeah, so I've gone over in the past some of the ICPC crash data. I don't think I've done it for last year, but I know like about a year and a half ago, it has like a five-year trailing set of data you can look at. And I usually separate it, you can separate it out to basically injuries where folks get hurt, and just every single fender bender that happens. And forgive me, Qualcomm Beach having the oldest population in Canada, some of the fender benders might be serious, some of them might be, you know, breaking or maybe not paying attention. So the injuries are what I tend to focus on. Memorial, all the way sort of along Memorial from about First to Fern, that's where you have a fair number of people getting hurt, mostly because you just have so much traffic and so many pedestrians. And to the point, yes, we're trying to densify the downtown area and have a more walkable downtown. It's not a conspiracy theory, it's just actually good planning. So we are going to have to think about as we get more people walking to Naked Naturals if they're still operating in the corner, because I do hope we have a corner grocery store in that area, so it's not just the two grocery stores that are far away. So folks who are living in the new development or in Railway Street can walk to a grocery store, okay, well, they'll be crossing Memorial. I think in terms of a total plan, obviously, we're constricted by the railway unless we want to spend a lot of extra money. We can always spend more money, but, you know, it's going to be a tough year for taxes. What we might want to think about is whether it's like at some of the schools where you have a sign that says, "This is how fast you're going" at one location as a temporary stopgap, just to remind folks. I know we talked about that at the waterfront too at one point and some of the measures we're doing at the waterfront. But I think implementing everything we want to do, we won't be able to do, but there might be one or two smaller things as an interim measure just as we get more density in that area, because it's not going to be 56 people at railway, for example. We had, when Walter and I, Walter Hoogland and I, were talking about the project and the vision for the future of the project, we tried to get a lot of three-bedroom units, which is unique for an affordable housing project. It's usually just one bedrooms, and the idea was for the single moms to be able to have a place to go. So you're going to have, some of those units are going to have three or four people in them. So it might be closer to like 80 or 90 people living there. So I think this is something where it's reasonable to say, as you get more density in that area, you have a very busy street, there's a history of accidents, let's maybe look at one or two small things as an interim and recognize we can't do everything. And then, you know, as we have our larger plan, I think September, though, is when we're doing everything anyways, so it's pretty fast, it's only a few months from now. So I don't know if we necessarily need to do, this is where I can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we were trying to do that in September for the big meeting on this, and that might be a great time to sort of implement some things.
Thank you, Your Worship. So a couple points. I think it's important for the public to continue calling the RCMP non-emergency line to report speeding. That way, the RCMP will continue to focus attention on those areas of concern and assign resources accordingly. I think we can also speak to the Staff Sergeant about the messaging that we've heard here tonight and to reinforce that. With regards to problem-solving this particular solution, the next review of the transportation plan is in September 2025, so not coming up this September. But I think if you would refer the matter back to staff to see if there's any small interim steps that could be achieved in advance. I know we're always looking for grants that could happen. We've had a suggestion to have some event in progress signs put out. So again, perhaps referring to staff to bring back some possibilities might be the most expeditious way through this tonight.
Any member of council with a thought on this? Pardon?
I had made the suggestion about the event in progress for Saturday mornings because it is a really busy time, and when people are coming up, if they are expecting that there's going to be congestion ahead, then at least they have the opportunity to just slow down.
Thank you. Anyone else in the gallery would like to speak? Go ahead. Sorry, I didn't see a hand.
Yeah, I think also in conjunction with that, if there were signage about this is a dangerous corner or this is a busy corner, because it is virtually a blind corner as you're coming up, rather than just relying on the speed limit, because people probably will continue to speed. But if there was some kind of indication that this is a dangerous situation or a tricky corner, perhaps people would slow down more.
Thank you. Anyone else in the gallery, other than going to Railway Street? I think you made your points very well. Thank you. Anyone else?
Todd Provost was second on the list, and then followed by Carol and Fred.
Mayor, Council, CAO Varela, with the dissolution of the Public Safety Committee, I understand this is the forum to bring issues forward. So I am going to, I did present this information to council and staff ahead of time, so I was hoping there may be more answers, but I didn't hear it, so I don't want to keep everybody here, but I will go through some of it. Hemsworth Road speeding and pedestrian safety concerns. For Hemsworth Road in the short section between Chester and Dogwood, which is an unusually narrow residential street, the last town data collected showed it had an average of 400 vehicles a day. At the time, it was a posted 25 kilometer per hour speed limit, and the data collected showed the highest rates of speed of 104.97 kilometers per hour and the average speeds between 37 and 50 kilometers per hour on the section at the time when it was a 25-hour kilometer speed. Unfortunately, staff arbitrarily changed the signs for this section to raise it to a 30-kilometer zone. It was confirmed at the January 2023 Public Safety Committee meeting that no bylaw had been passed to support this speed change, nor had any public consultation taken place. The change was enacted in spite of repeated public expressions of concern for speed and pedestrian safety. CAO Varela, and when we met at our quarterly meeting in April of '23, mentioned that one possible solution was Hemsworth, that while some fiber optic work was being done in the area, that that pathway improvements could be possible. I just heard Mr. Dickinson reference that in the 25 to 28 plan, that there might be fiber optic work. So, you know, again, you know, so this is frustrating to hear that that is the timeframe we're looking at now. When we recently had some heavy rains just a few days ago there, I was in the area Hemsworth and Chester, and I observed a school-aged child struggling to avoid the many puddles which are not passable along this informal trail, having to move to the narrow roadway. We would ask staff and council to assist with providing an update on the status of improving pedestrian safety and comfort along Hemsworth Road. Now, because I'm not used to this format now, as opposed to the Public Safety Committee, I'm not sure if you just want me to read it all, or is that I'm through the chair? What?
Just read what's on your mind.
Okay, then. Speeding bylaw and default speed limits. Okay, during our March 8, 2024, meeting, we asked for an update on the requested speeding bylaw review. We were advised by CAO Varela that the bylaw had been assessed as low risk and would not be completed until in 2024, but we could ask council to include it in the strategic planning for 2025. When QWRA presented research to support a reduction of resident's speed limits at the committee of the whole meeting in January of this year, the Traffic Consultant Mr. Durrell concluded there are reductions in serious injuries and fatalities when speed limits are reduced. One example he provided was out of Toronto, a 67% decrease in major and fatal injuries have been attributed to a 30-kilometer-per-hour speed limit on local streets. In light of concerns for public safety from speeding in our community and the widely-accepted evidence that lower speed limits reduce harm collisions and enhance feelings of safety for pedestrians, cyclists and drivers, we would ask council to pause the arbitrary change of posted speed limits until the speeding bylaw has been reviewed. And then also, council has received a reply from the province on a change in legislation to provide them the ability to set their own default speed limits. At the January committee of the whole meeting, there was a motion passed by council to send a letter to the province. We've asked for updates, we haven't received any update of that. I don't know if you've received an update on that, but that's what we're asking for, because that was the whole premise that the advice Mr. Durrell had given you said, "We won't do these other changes that we had researched and presented at that time, because we'll accept the advice to write the letter to the province and get an answer." And I've asked Mr. Walker, MLA Walker, for an update on it, and I'm asking council now for an update on that as well. On the speeding concerns on Chester Road, Chriselton Park is located on Chester Road and has a significant increase of use by children and residents of all ages since council and staff kindly obtained and installed new playground equipment. With this increase in use, we are concerned about the safety of all users, but especially children who have to walk along Chester, Qualcomm and Nooka roads to get to the park. We would ask council to designate the roads in the area of Chriselton Park, Chester, Qualcomm, Nooka, for example, a playground zone, which provides all users enhanced safety measures. Residents have also contacted council, staff and QWA about concerns for users of Chester Road, especially children, on Chester Road between Qualcomm Road and Hemsworth Road. Staff advised that speed data had not been gathered for this section of Chester Road. We would ask staff to deploy the town's speed data devices along this section of Chester Road to analyze traffic behaviors. Then, after that's done, we would ask that the mobile speed feedback sign staff advised in the past, and we've heard about at meetings, have been received by the town to be deployed after this collection period to educate drivers in the area and to enhance public safety. And I don't know, I'm hoping that perhaps some update can be provided. I don't know if that mobile speed sign exists. Perhaps that's one thing that may help in this other situation with council as well, if it does still exist. And then the Qualcomm Beach Community Safety Plan, we asked, I submitted information ahead of time asking for an update on it, but in Mr. Durrell's age-friendly transportation plan, as it was known then, report of January 2024, which was subsequently accepted by council, a number of traffic improvement projects were recommended as higher priorities: improved signalization for the existing crossing at Hemsworth and Highway 19A; a flashing crossing in Median Island for Qualcomm Road and Highway 19A; a flashing crossing for Hall Road and Highway 19A; a pedestrian signal, streetlight and pathway at Highway 19A at Milner Gardens. And I've taken that wording directly from the report. We have recently asked for an update on these projects, but we did get some information back that council might be presented to on July 17. But council stated that part of the rationale for holding committee of the whole meetings, instead of maintaining the Public Safety Committee, was so more members of public could be present to hear the information. We believe the same rationale applies here versus a regular council meeting, which is not always well-attended by a large proportion of residents. So we, you know, as I say, we've asked for an update on some of those outstanding projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dickinson, is there any information regarding some of these questions and updates?
Most assuredly, Your Worship. So Hemsworth, the Hemsworth Road where there's a trail, we do have that in the 2526 financial plan, because that's when we're going to be putting in the fiber optic for our water system, so at that time, we would build the trail. In regards to the default letter that was sent to the ministry, I believe, three weeks ago, so that has gone to the ministry, requesting them to consider the ability for municipalities to control our own default lowest speed limit. Regarding Chriselton Park, playground zone would be appropriate there, so we're looking at putting up signage. But prior to doing that, we are going to go and put some traffic counts there and kind of see what speeds we have, and then what we can do is then see what happens pre and post and see how it's effective, and if it isn't, then what other measures we may be able to do along there. And the mobile speed sign, we did purchase it last year, and we have been using it effectively both to monitor speeds, but also as an information sign. For instance, at one of the functions for the farmer's market, we actually had it up just warning traffic that there was congestion up ahead, but also we have it on that's giving us a traffic count and speeds, which is great, because then it doesn't impact people's speed, you get to see what they're really doing, and then you can actually put up another sign flashing at some point that they are speeding. So that kind of gives you a pre and post if you put a sign up, and it helps adjust their behavior. And I think, aside from that, the improvements that were mentioned, I do not know about a signalization for existing crossing at Hemsworth and Highway 19A. We have, I think, two years ago, we put up the RFBs for a pedestrian crossing as well as Median Island, and so it's a lot more visible now. And I didn't realize we, from our transportation plan, were done, that we think that's a warranted and appropriate measure at that location. The flashing crossing in Meeting Island for Qualcomm Road and Highway 19A, that's, I'd say, about a third of the way down our priority list, as well as, so is a flashing crossing for Hall Road and Highway 19A, it is also about a third of the way down. And then a pedestrian signal, streetlight and pathway at Highway 19A in Milner Gardens is, I believe, just about at the bottom of the list as priorities go.
Thank you. Well, that's some information. Anything, any other comments? Councillor Harrison?
All right. I just want to add too that I think the idea of a playground zone near Chriselton Park with those upgrades is really reasonable. I think mine, it should just be the boundaries of where we set how far that playground zone should be, where the areas are, but I think the general idea is actually very, is well warranted. I'm glad also to hear, incidentally, that it's being utilized well. That's really heartening to hear. When you spend a lot of taxpayer money, you like to hear it's getting used. The only proviso I'd say, though, for some of the other projects is that I always, in the back of my head, having been here for about five years, I always feel guilty about Chartwell. Feels to me like they don't advocate as much as some of the other parts of town, and I know when I door knocked when I first ran, little do you know, I actually had a campaign thing on my little rack card which says, "Lower speed limits." But folks in Chartwell would talk a lot about Sunrise and the high speeds, because it's such a wide road uniquely, and folks would talk about high speeds on Sunrise. So I'm always, when we're talking about how we prioritize our resources, I always feel guilty that's, you know, maybe we skip over Chartwell sometimes, because there are obviously some really important issues that are being raised here, but, you know, they just maybe haven't come to a microphone, and so it doesn't get the same priority. But no, I think a lot of this information is really useful. And the last thing, too, is the difference between 25 and 30 for safety isn't too high. The difference between like 30 and 40 is really important, and 40 to 50 is really important. But when they looked at serious injury with traffic speed, forgive me, this is part of the reason why I had that on my rack card. I think it's the World Health Organization had a chart which showed speeds interacting with serious injury, and it's an S curve that takes off around 30 kilometers an hour. So under 30, it's really slow rate of increase, hits 30, skyrockets, and then basically everyone who gets hit is, because you see kilometers an hour, you're having a bad day. You're having a bad day. So that 25 to 30 might not be as impactful for that change from town staff and the first point that you raised.
Thank you. Anyone else in the gallery would like to make a comment about public safety? Go on up. Did you have a list on that? Is, is that, okay, you're up.
Hello, Carol and Fred Dow. Fred had to leave, so he asked me to carry the midnight oil. So I'm here again asking for help. I, in reading the summary consultation on the Public Safety Committee, I was trying to follow the changes that were here presented by Rob Dickinson. So how, how will the format be? All these people that were on the committee, that is dissolved? And, and how will that be replaced? How, how will there be a management meeting? I, I am, I'm trying to understand that.
The, the idea is to have people come here. And all of council and staff, listen, it's, it's recorded. A committee meeting in the committee room is just for the people who are invited or who've been appointed, and usually one member of council. This now is going to be dealt with by all of council. So way more efficient, rather than, than having one member of council report to the rest of council and all that. Come right here. This is the place. We're doing it in evening hours, so people who work in the daytime, they can attend. If you can't, we always start at around four o'clock for each committee hall meeting. So we're trying to accommodate as many people as we can. But all of council can hear the concern, staff can hear the concern, and council can then make a motion to council for recommendations.
Right, thank you. So the public are invited?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you very much for the explanation. And I want to especially thank you, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, for the meeting that you arranged for our EMF radiation at the Civic Center. I think it's been almost a year and a half ago. That was well-attended and very much appreciated. We had school board people there. It, it was, it was a good meeting. And, and the purpose is to educate us about the importance of the safety involved with and understanding EMF radiation and its harmful effects. The board invited us on two occasions to present to them. The, Terry Hitch, I believe, made a, a very good presentation to you as well about EMF radiation, if I understood. The, two, two points I'd like to make is, and, and you may or may not know about this. Mr. Clegg, who was the past president of Microsoft Canada, resigned because he was concerned about the harmful effects of EMF radiation and formed Canadians for Safe Technology, which has over 20,000 people in their group, and it's growing. All kinds of professional people, and they meet twice a month. The reason I'm bringing this up, it is a safety concern. There is even, I should mention to you, that Lloyds of London will, and reinsurers, will not insure the harmful effects of EMF radiation. So this is really important, I think, to consider. One other note is that Lady Smith arranged for a site cell tower protocol some 12 years ago, so they were protecting certain areas. So just, just being aware of some of those things, I think, really help us all. We really aim to educate and protect. And I hope that you, you will give some consideration to that on these future meetings. My personal impression is that because of the importance of the subjects I just brought up without going into a lot of detail, is that it should be held at least two to three times a year, so we have an opportunity to be able to express ourselves if there are concerns that come up on this subject. May I ask if that could be considered?
It will be considered.
You will consider that?
Consider it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the gallery? Yes, Trevor, come on up. Sorry, Trevor, was that the? Okay. We have, we have a new, built-in assistance.
Oh, it does itself, okay. It was green when I, okay. One is, and I've mentioned this before, my name is Trevor Wicks. I live at 639 Arbutus and have been around here for a long time. One of the key issues, several key issues, but they're really quick. One is vision lines. From every intersection, there, there's a designated vision line that should be clear to view traffic coming from any direction and along roads where trees are hanging over stop signs and so on. There are a number of places in town where if it snows or heavy rain or the trees grow more, a stop sign can be completely obliterated. Somebody comes in from somewhere else. And I was in a situation, not directly, but when, I think, four or five, two were killed and three injured. Young people drove through a stop sign because a maple tree had come right down over top of the stop sign. They didn't know it was there, went right across the highway. So I have firsthand experience on that and resolving it. It's really easy to resolve. So if the, the vision lines are not appropriate, so you can't see, unless your front end of your vehicle is out onto the road, that's a no-starter, according to highways rules. There are designated distances. So the other one is stop lines. Around town, I live near the corner of First Avenue and Arbutus, and I've seen cars many times go straight through on Arbutus without even slowing down. They don't even slow down. So if they miss the stop sign, there should be a wide white line and the word "stop" in no uncertain terms, so that vehicles coming toward that, especially if they don't know the area or somebody has parked or wherever, they have an ability to, to judge where to stop. Because a lot of people don't, well, very few people actually stop at stop signs. But the line is important. And in every community I've ever witnessed or been in, the stop lines and stop, the word "stop" is very prominent, as, as important as the, the line down the road. So the other one is the corner of Memorial near the railway tracks, and traffic comes up there at tremendous speed, and people are going back and forth from the farmer's market. There should be some kind of slow sign or something to indicate. There are people just coming out from the road where the barber shop, I'm not sure which one that is.
Actually, we had a delegation earlier before you came.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And that's what's all about that.
Oh, okay. Take back what I just said.
No, you're aligned with what they said.
Okay. The other one is the waterfront. I think the waterfront in general, the, the pedestrian places and the parking is so totally dangerous. I, I hate to say it, but I've seen so many crazy people on these, well, I shouldn't say crazy people, electric bikes and scooters and that. You can't hear them, and there's weaving of traffic and people walking across the highway. That highway is, is a highway. It should be a highway. And the parking and the pedestrian access to the beach should be on one side of, on the beach side of the road. Easy to figure out, not a big, big deal. And I thought when they widened the road, they would have moved the road over another three meters and had the road all for traffic, parking all for parking, no problem. You'd have just as many parking spaces. But the traffic and the pedestrians with Granny and the kids and the, the floaty device and forgot the barbecue, that, that's not conducive with a high, crossing a highway. I, I don't understand it. So that's just my perspective. I've been around a few times, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Keith. Pardon?
Yeah.
Okay, Keith, come on up.
I thought I'd need a stool here, but obviously it's slow enough. I'm Keith Smith, and for about 30 years now, we've had property on the, on the waterfront. I've got three questions tonight. And listening to the officer referring to that part of it, maybe I, I got the wrong information. But my three questions, if you permit me to read them out, because they all interconnect. I was on the understanding that the roadbed was to be resurfaced on 19A along the waterfront. When will the resurfacing be scheduled? Two, if and when the resurfacing is scheduled, will the town institute traffic calming measures along with additional pedestrian crosswalks north of the Shady Rest, i.e. perhaps where West Crescent comes into 19A? The other obvious one is at St. Andrews Lodge in Southham Park. And this was recommended by the town's consultant at one of the previous meetings on the age-friendly transportation plan. And my third thing is, in the meantime, and in the interest of pedestrian safety, will you please install a speed awareness monitor on 19A near Laburnum, as suggested by the town's consultant, and also by Consular Young at one, one of our meetings that we had here? And this came up during the 2023 Age Friendly Transportation Plan public meeting. Thank you for listening. May I sit down?
Okay, there you go. So most of my concerns have been addressed by a lot of the gentlemen that have come before me. So obviously, I'm not the only one that was going to bring the same issue. I live on a small road, tiny road, Berwick Road North, or I think you call it Berwick? Berwick? I'm, I'm fairly new to the area, so I'm still learning the lingo. About any road, I've lived there for about a year and a half now. Berwick Road North. It's tiny. All the problems that everybody's been mentioning are getting pushed over to me. They can't get up there, they're going too fast. And now I'm having an issue with the school buses. I've been in touch with them and I've been in touch with the police about this issue. And they say they're looking into it, but they say, well, you've got to get in touch with you people first. So my concern is, the buses cannot, or they, they tell me they can't. They can't turn right on Memorial when they're coming from the high school on Village Way. There was only a problem with one bus about six months ago. I made a complaint, I made some phone calls. Now I have a problem with six buses that say they can go wherever they want to go. Now, if you know Berwick Road North, it's a tiny road with a steep hill right at the very beginning of it. So they come around there and they boot it. Now, it's 50 kilometers an hour on that road. It's full of hedges. I can barely get out some days with the speed of the traffic. It's tiny. And the problem I've looked at, it's the way the road is designed on Village Way. The curve that you put in, the buses can't get around it. So I don't know whether at some point you can address that in the future, so the buses, or the bus driver can actually get his bus out and turn around. You need a dedicated lane turning right, which you could do by knocking that corner off. The traffic is constantly backed up every day. I've got all kinds of videos, if anybody wants to see them. My particular street is used by schoolkids to get down that road. They should actually be going down Memorial, where there's a really, really good sidewalk with curbs, so they can't really get run down. They can very easily get run down on my street. There's no sidewalk. But the kids use it, just like the bus drivers use it, because it's shorter. So I brought that to your attention. And hopefully, if you can just maybe phone the bus dispatcher, and maybe you have more weight than I do, and they can start going where they're supposed to go. The police tell me they're supposed to go down Memorial. Instead, they're coming down my street. They have to do three turns instead of one. But they're saying they cannot make a right onto Memorial. They're saying it's just too busy, and their buses are too big. So now that they're coming up my street as well, they're busting up all the road on the corner down by the golf course. The road is starting to break up because the bus is so big, it cuts off onto the gravel and it's flicking it everywhere. So this has seemed to have got, I've only been in the, in the area a year and a half, and the first nine months it wasn't an issue, until I made one complaint about buses. And now I'm seeing, apparently, they can drive wherever they want. That's what I've been told. So if you can do anything about that and have a look at that intersection, if you're doing, if you're doing any kind of infrastructure changing, if you look at how that road sweeps out, how on earth are they supposed to go right? They can't, or they tell me they can't. There's a dedicated left coming up, but there's no dedicated right going down. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Anyone else? With that, thank you for your patience. Thank you, staff, for hanging in there with us. I think we've got lots of issues for us to consider. Obviously, we can't do it all, but we'll, we'll start working on some of the issues. And from my perspective, the, the big issue has been for some time is the railway and the crossings that we cannot put there on Memorial and culminating in the market. The crosswalks, the traffic coming out of railway street, more traffic coming out of Fern. When you, when new developments get completed, there'll be a lot more traffic there. And the building with Kiwanis Housing. So, yeah, it's going to be a very challenging project for us to fix, but it needs our attention. So with that, I think a motion to adjourn would be appropriate. Consular Young, Consular Vandevog, discussion, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you. And thank you for the gallery.